Good evening, I call to order the North Andover School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 6th, 2025. We typically start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we do not have a flag available, so we're recording that tonight. I did want everybody to know that if you are in the webinar, that is optimal place to be for public comment. If you do not intend on making public comment, the school committee meeting is still available to watch via your normal channels that you would watch your school committee meeting in. We just want to make sure that we have appropriate bandwidth for everybody who would like to make public comment. Alright, moving on, we're gonna start with our recognitions and communications. We'll go right into the superintendent recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Nick and Gray Conti, they're North Andover Middle School teachers. They were selected this year to participate in CLEES Emerging Leadership Fellowship. CLEES stands for Cultivating Equity One Leader at a Time. Recently, both Nick and Gray Conti led the professional development for our middle school staff on data-informed child study. It's a protocol that they've written to maximize team collaboration and to utilize data to inform the next steps to support our students. We're very proud of Nick and Gray Conti. Also at NAMs, NAMs had their Spelling Bee, Spelling Bee 2025. It was held on January 28th. Students and families attended. It was a really great turnout. It was an exciting event. They had two top spellers in the end going back and forth until finally they were able to announce this year's winner. This year's winner was Dityanji Chodri from 7C and Eva Sideri from 6C as the runner-up. And the students who placed in the top five were as follows. So again, Dityanji Chodri, Eva Sideri, Sartaj Sankala, Christina Castro, and Sofia Villalora. We want to thank Mr. Mueller for organizing this event and our judges, Ms. Lenardis and Mrs. Jones. Just a reminder that Pierce Leary was the Project 350 Ambassador. She spent January 25th on their launch day, and it was a wonderful day. Project 351 is about enrichment, training, and mentorship, and our ambassadors spend the entire year building unity, cultivating kindness, and transforming lives through community service. We want to congratulate our North Andover eighth graders who had, were accepted into the Massachusetts Music Educators Northeastern District Junior Music Festival. Robbie Dirney won alto sax, Danielle Lee on the bass clarinet, and Isaiah Rodriguez on tuba. They're gonna perform in the festival this March at the Galvin Middle School in Wakefield. North Andover High School wants to congratulate their robotics team. They had six teams from North Andover High make it to the north to the final rounds. One team led 8568C made it to the very final match in the bracket before being defeated by a slim three points. They have seven teams going to competition this Saturday, where we hope to get another two teams that will qualify for the state championship, which is on February 22nd. Things are looking good for North Andover High School, sending at least one of their teams to world championships in Dallas this year. And then, this is School Counselors Week. I think I mentioned this a little bit last week, but we would like to just say how lucky we are to have such talented and dedicated group of counselors throughout our district. Their commitment to the emotional, social, and academic well-being of their students is really quite remarkable. Their understanding of the challenges that our students face, and they are constantly looking for ways to improve their practice in order to help every student succeed. If you have a school counselor that you are attached to, both students and families, we really encourage you to send them a note of appreciation on this week of Student Counselor Appreciation Week. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Michelle O'Leary, who is our district social-emotional learning coordinator who oversees all of our counselors. So that's our recognition for this week.
You're muted.
Thank you, rookie mistake. Thank you, Ms. Lethrop. Are there any roundtable reports from the committee regarding any community events that they have attended? Not including the community chats, we will get to that later.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure being a judge again at the robotics, last robotics competition a week and a half ago. And I do remember that team that was just mentioned. They did stand out when we were going around. So I was a thrill to be a part of that.
Madam Chair, I forgot to say it last week, so I apologize for that. But last Wednesday, I went to the NAMs sixth and seventh grade band concert. My son is in seventh grade, and of course, I think they were fantastic, good job percussionists. But I also want to say that the sixth grade performance of Eagle Summit March was phenomenal. Those of you will know that that's always the first thing that they learn, and this year, sixth graders really did an exceptional job on that piece. They've learned so much. Dare I say, it was better than last year's sixth graders, too. Not too loud, my son doesn't hear it, but they were very good. So amazing job to them and to our two wonderful instrumental, instrumental teachers, Mr. Nelson, Ms. Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, upcoming NAPS and community events. Do we have any of those?
I have a couple. Tomorrow, February 7th, Music of Latin America with the North Andover High School Choral Group will perform at North Andover High School at 7 o'clock. And I also want to remind the community that we are in the middle of North Andover Reads 2025. It started in January 21st, and it goes through March 1st. This year, our community read is focusing on neurodiversity, and this is a partnership with Stevens Memorial Library and all of our librarians in North Andover. We're doing activities in the school and at the library and with our teachers as well. And they're, I'm just reminding to invite readers to learn about and discuss and celebrate the richness of neurodiverse experiences. It's a chance to come together to celebrate diverse ways of thinking and being and foster a more inclusive community. If you go to the Stevens Memorial Library website, you'll see all the wonderful activities they have planned. And again, it's happening in all of our schools. And then, winter break is coming up, just a reminder, February 17th through 21st. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Hopefully, everybody can get healthy over that winter break. I also wanted to mention that March 28th and 29th are the Sweetheart dances. So students in fourth and fifth, I believe, is on March 28th, and the second and third grade is on March 29th. K and first have their own that is separate. I'm not sure of those dates yet, but those students can go to the Sweetheart dance and bring something, somebody special with them. It's always a fun event. And I believe those tickets are on sale as well, so families can get those. Okay, any upcoming committee, community chats, Ms. Cormier?
Yes, the next one is on Saturday, March 1st. It's at the central office from 11 to 12, and that one is hosted by Mr. Brown and myself. We'll be there for, anticipate the hour for anyone who would like to come from the community and have an informal chat with two school community members. The one on the March 1st, and the next one is June 7th on the schedule.
Great, thank you. Okay, going into communications, we have our student representative reports. I believe we have, I'm not sure who we have in here right now.
Um, so Harper is trying to get in. I think she said she requested to get in as Vivian Barrios, which I believe is her mom's account. There's like some technical difficulties there.
Okay.
Oh, it's not working apparently. Um, okay, well.
Okay. I'm not sure if they're able to let her in out of the participants, or if she has, I think she would have gotten a separate email and has to log in with her student account.
Yeah, no problem. How about, Levine, do you want to just start, and then we can see where Harper's at, at the end of her report?
Alright. Is she able to just get in as a regular attendee?
No, she's just, she's not even able to get in at all.
Because if she can get in that way, I can promote her to a panelist.
Okay, she just can't.
Thank you, sorry, Levine.
It's all good. So our first part of the notes is that we had a snow day today, which I'm sure we're all aware of, but it was still a good snow day. I know I personally studied with my friends, and I know other people that caught up on some of their work, especially with like tests coming up tomorrow. And yeah, that's the first note. Our second note was for advisory. We did plan out and request our courses, but specifically for the junior class, the junior class sent flyers for extra information, as well as forms for possible like senior events. And then, my last note is on the eighth grade tours and presentations on Monday. So it was a really, really good night. Choir performed first, and then we also had Nate and Linda, two seniors, talk about their experiences at the school. They brought a lot of energy and some really nice perspectives. Ms. Holman also introduced the school, and then the parents went on tours. I was a tour guide myself, and it was really fun. We included stops for places like Focus, the library, and the choir, and we had some teachers like Mr. Dugan that talked about their departments, right? So we made sure to inform the parents on course requirements and what courses they might take, as well as school culture, and just how the school works, operates, and looks. And then, right after that, we had a club fair in the gym. So this is, it was similar to the club fair we host by the cafeteria in the beginning of the year, but this time was a little bit different because the parents also got to come. And we had a really good show. We had plenty of of clubs going, and we even had some sports teams. So you know, I saw football there, I saw swim, and then I also saw some of the language clubs, like German, and they actually have some really good chocolates, the German club. And then we also had Future Medical Professional Club, and all of those. And CC?
Okay, um, the student council is preparing a Valentine's Day fundraiser. So usually, we sell candy grams and roses that get delivered to students' classes. The freshman class board is also doing a Valentine's Day chocolate fundraiser where they're gonna be selling chocolates at all three lunches. NHS is doing, oh, NHS did a Chipotle fundraiser on Wednesday, February 5th, and the Marines visited the high school, so students interested could stop by and ask questions if they were interested. Oh? Okay. So, another thing is that senior nights have ended. Yesterday was our last one with wrestling, and MVCs are beginning for all sports.
Thank you, and I think we had Ms. Barrios was able to get in. I think I saw her, if she wants to jump in.
Um, yeah, hi, sorry. Um, sorry, um, the NHS choir is bringing in a guest conductor once again. The concert is tomorrow. They hosted their final rehearsal at a choir member's house today in participation for their concert. Course selection began Wednesday during advisory. The class of 2025 future plans page is in full swing, and students are able to submit where they're going and a picture of themselves to be featured on the page. And a couple of students have been selected to attend the FBI Teen Academy on February 19th, and NHS students have been submitting their service hours for the semester.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee members?
Um, I have a question. Probably not so much for the student reps, but thank you for being patient, Harper. Sorry that happened, and you got here. Thank you for being patient. But I guess it's more for Superintendent Lethrop. The students mentioned that we had a snow day today, which means our last day of school has been changed. So our last day of school is now going to be, it was June 13th, so now it will be June 16th? Am I doing that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so students, you need to tell all your friends that now going to be June 16th. Everyone knows, except for the seniors, because you'll already be done by then.
We'll be sure to send out some communication about that.
Alright, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, just a reminder, I mentioned this at the beginning, but I know we are continually getting more people joining. We'd like to, you know, for the webinar, if you're making public comment, that's a good place to be able to do that. If you're not, do not plan on making public comment rather than being in the webinar. If you could please just watch on your normal channels, either on the, on TV or NAcam site, that would be appreciated. But it's not, you know, not obligated. I just wanted to make sure we have enough room for those that want to make public comment. Speaking of which, we are going to go into public comment. What we are going to have you do is there is a little raise hand icon. Mr. Hicks will be watching for those, and we'll be able to call in order. We're going to stick with the same guidelines that we limit comment to three minutes to allow as many people to speak as we can possibly get in. All comments should be directed to the chair, and we can go ahead and proceed. So if you'd like to make a public comment, may raise your hand, and then wait till you are called on, you'll be unmuted to be able to make that comment.
Ms. Koenig, I'm just gonna give everyone a moment to do that. Make sure that the best way for me to be able to call on you when it's your turn is to have your name in the thing, because if I have like four different people or three different people who are just called iPhone, they don't need to change your name if they're not gonna make public comment, but it'll be hard for me to know who to call if they're all named iPhone. So one thing that would be great to help me do this process. So we're gonna start with North Andover President, and then Mr. Sean Dunn, you will be second. So I'll push the button here, you'll get a notification on your screen, welcoming you, welcoming you to do something, so you can then talk.
And I just want to ask again that you state your name and address.
So North Andover President, you are free to go to start.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. Oh, we can't see my face. I'm not sure.
We won't see faces, we're only, we'll only be able to hear you.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you won't see my, my face. Alright, I put makeup for no reason, but that's alright. Good evening, chairs, school committee board, and administrative team. My name is Juliette Dorman, and I reside at 32 London Street in North Andover. I'm a North Andover Public School teacher and the North Andover Teachers Association President. For the last 18 years that I've lived in this town and country, I have remained silent regarding my political opinions, because I felt that as a non-citizen, my opinions were not relevant. I've watched this town and this country make decisions that I struggle with, but I've kept quiet. This year, I made the difficult decision to renounce my loyalty to my home country, France, to become an American citizen, so I could have a voice and a vote. At town meeting this year, I won't be sitting in the non-voter section, like I've been doing for a bunch of years. I will be sitting in the voter section, and I will have a voice. I urge you, all of you, to join me in voicing your opinions. You are the public school advocates. Right now, more than ever, we need more people to speak up for those who are too often unheard. The educators, and most importantly, the children they serve every single day. The superintendent, Mrs. Lethrop, at the last school meeting, recommended a level funded budget. North Andover Teachers Association has recommended a level funded budget. The parents of this town are pushing for a level funded budget. Join us. Recommend a level funded budget. Thank you on behalf of the children, educators, and all of North Andover Public School staff and the parents of this town.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Next up, we have Sean Dunn. I'm gonna push the button, and I have no one else right now in the queue. So if you'd like to make a public comment, oh, Mr. Dunn, you lowered your hand. Okay, I have no one else right now, but we can give it a moment. Oh, hands back up, I go back to talking. Here we go. Mr. Dunn, can you hear, make sure we can hear you? You're great. Perfect.
So I just wanted to say, it's my understanding that you'll be voting on a budget.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt for just a moment. If you could state your name and address, please.
Sean Dunn, 325 Berry Street. It's my understanding that you'll be voting on a budget today, and I just wanted to voice my opinion that anything other than the level funding budget would be a disappointment. In order to continue to operate a functional school system, I think we need to have that same level of service that's been offered to our students so far. And without that level funding, that level of service won't be offered to our children. So I am in favor of a level funded budget, and only the level funded budget. And I hope that you'll take that opinion as well.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I only have one in the queue, is Heather Credell McGrath. Pushed the button. If you could just give us a mic check, Heather?
Hi, hello.
You are ready to go. Please state your name and address, and then we'll start the clock for you.
My name is Heather Credell McGrath. I'm at 110 Laconia Circle in North Andover. I had not intended to speak tonight, but I did also want to let you know, I could not find the viewing of the site via the link that I had received. So I don't know how many people are able to view, or how many people are actually able to find the Zoom link. But I am a parent. I have two young children, one in kindergarten at A B E C C, who will be going to sergeant next year, and one who will be starting kindergarten at A B E C C in the fall. We moved here to North Andover in fall of 2021, because we knew we wanted a strong public school system for our children. We moved here, we were excited about joining this community. We had heard wonderful things about the school system here. And over the recent weeks, I have just been so disappointed to see and hear how underfunded our schools have been over, you know, a long period of time, it sounds like, to hear that we are below the state average in spending per student, to hear that we are below the average of the surrounding comparable towns. It's very disheartening. And then to even think that in a town where there is obviously, you know, apparent wealth and, you know, the capacity to support our school systems, that there's even consideration in cutting the current services that we have, it's just heartbreaking. And I'm sure that there are many other parents who feel that way. I know that there are. I've been to the school committee meetings recently. I've seen the people coming out, speaking, the students speaking, you know, it's just, anything other than a level services budget is unacceptable. It's unacceptable to the parents in this town. It's unacceptable to the students in this town. It's unacceptable for the teachers in this town. And honestly, it should be acceptable to, unacceptable to everyone in this town who wants to maintain our home values, our property values, our communities, you know, bring in new families, bring, you know, have students who want to graduate and come back here and raise their families. It's, it's not a question, and there is no other option. I encourage you to please, please recommend a level funded budget, so we are not taking anything away from our students who deserve more than what we are giving them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Heather. Next, we have just one more in the queue right now. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll get to you. Next up, we have Nadia Chinchilla Marto. I hope I said your name correctly. Can you give us a little mic check, Nadia?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. So state your name and address, and then we'll start the clock.
You did not say my name correctly. It's Chinchilla. That's okay. It's Chinchilla, like the animal, not the fur coat, I always say. But that's, that's okay. Hold on, Billy. I, I've spoken various times during the school committee meeting, so I'm sure you've heard my, my speech now about the need for a level service budget, one that will actually meet the needs of the kids. I'm also one that at the second to last meeting, did a little bit of digging about per pupil spending, and found, I was alarmed by the lack of, or how much less our per pupil spending is compared to the other towns that we should be comparing ourselves to. I went back and did a little bit more digging and have found that our position is actually not unique, that there are various other towns who are experiencing increased costs due to negotiated salaries that are, that are experiencing an increase in inflation, that are seeing just the need for higher funding of education. I found that there are towns like Westford in Tracut, I don't know, Natick, Brookline, Rotten, Metford, all which are seeking overrides because they need to properly fund the education. I would just note that it seems like those towns have recognized that there is a need to increase the funding for education. I ask that North Andover follow suit and ask the town, we, the, the parents will support you. We will try to get the town to support a budget that actually meets the needs of the children. We, our situation is not unique, and I think that it is only appropriate for the school committee who is charged really with representing the needs of the children and the request of the parents to seek a level service budget. I will just add that I know that we had a snow day, but that I do wish that this meeting would have been moved for a day where you could have seen our faces, you could have seen, or we would have had actually a better view of you, because right now, I see most people are just looking down and not, not 100% invested, or maybe appear distracted, and that's just the way the virtual meetings work. But, you know, I think if there, there's ever an opportunity to move these meetings, I think it's important to have them in person so that people can come and appropriately voice their opinions. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna jump in. As far as looking down, I know myself and many of my committee members take notes on the comments that are made, so that we can have them to reflect on. So there, there are notes being taken.
Up next, we have E. Harris, and then followed by Kristy Hale will be after that. So E. Harris, give us a milk, a milk, a mic check, please.
Hi, Erin Harris, 135 Stevens Street. You've offered me at the past couple of meetings speak, and I'd like to once again encourage you to support only a level services budget. Quite frankly, I'm disappointed that the best of the options that we have is level services, when what we really should be doing is investing even more in the future of our schools and of our children. Our teachers, our administrators, and all the support staff deserve the contract that they negotiated, and they deserve to have a, give them everything they need to support our students. And I don't believe that we've been meeting those goals over the years. They do unbelievable amounts of work to ensure that our children have the best future that they can have. As the perspective of a property owner, I also strongly believe it's the only way to preserve our property values and therefore generate future tax revenue, bring new businesses to town, to shift the tax burden from the individual homeowners to the businesses. It's a long-term plan, but having a strong school system is something that gets us on that path. And right now, I don't believe that we are on that path. My hope is that we can continue these financial discussions in the years that follow. This one-year period gives us time to pause and think and reflect to determine where we want to go, so that when we are next discussing a possible school closure and reduction of staff, that we have a one-year, three-year, and five-year vision for our schools. So when we're talking about closing a school to start construction on it, to make it bigger and better, and potentially to consolidate another school, that we have secured funding for that project. We don't want to shut down Kittridge on the presumption that we will secure funding for it to be on the presumption that we will secure funding for it to be rebuilt when we may not be able to do do that. We don't know what the future holds. There are too many unknowns. And once we start down this path of terminating um the services of these teachers and administrators who have given so much to us for what are not competitive salaries based on our neighboring district. What are we going to do when we then need to hire? Because people are not going to want to come here. We have always gotten the best of the best despite not offering the best of the best salary. That will leave us in the future. We have to be strategic and think long term. From a hiring perspective, where will we be if we make this rash decision without having all the information that we need? I think maybe in the future, we might find that it's most viable to have four elementary schools as opposed to five, but right now we haven't had enough time for thoughtful reflection and planning and preparing to execute that goal to make a decision for this one-year budget that sets that in motion when it cannot be readily undone is not worth it. Level services is the only viable option at this time that will set us on a path where we know what the potential risks and outcomes are. Both of the other budgets could potentially land us in an even worse financial position at the end of next year and at the end of the two and three years following that. So let's be prudent in making this decision. Let's put our town first. Let's put our students first and put our teachers and administrators first. They deserve it. Thank you.
I muted myself. Christie Hale, you are next up. Um, if you give some mic check.
Great. Can you guys hear me okay?
I I can hear you. Name and address and you may start.
This is Christie Hale. I'm at forty-five Lacy Street. Um, at the risk of having probably the most unpopular comments this evening, I encourage you guys to do what probably a lot of people would not be advocating for, and that would be to make a fiscally responsible decision. As somebody who has had children in this district for the past seventeen years, I have watched things in and out and budgets up and down and like so many people, I agree that it would be wonderful not only for level services but to have more money and more money given to this district to have all students get exactly the services that they need from our students who need extra assistance to our students who need support at the higher levels because they're our achievers and they deserve extra support as well. Unfortunately, we don't have that much money. And if we take this to town meeting, and I fearful that a lot of these people who are asking for this have not been to town meeting and have not heard people upset about having extra money asked year over year, that it will fail and we will be forced to cut everything and we will be back where we were eighteen years ago where we are faced with the most horrific cuts that our district has seen. So I encourage you to please factor that in when you make your decision tonight of making a responsible decision when you're advocating for the budget that you're gonna put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, right now, Ms. Koenig, we don't have anyone else um with their hands up, but maybe we should wait just a a moment. Um, oh, we have one. Oh, a couple more. Fantastic. So I have Eric coming up next, and then we'll have Jessica and uh poor Kay is after that. Um, so Eric, if you could give us a mic check.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Your name and address, please, sir, and then you may begin.
Eric McLean, three ninety-nine Ray Street. Uh, Madam Chairman, members of the board, I I appreciate your time tonight. Um to vote for anything other than a level set budget is unacceptable for this committee. Any other budget would decimate our town, our property values, our community, and most importantly, our children. It would be devastating. It would risk losing accreditation again which would have more even more effects on all those items. It is also apparent that we cannot keep a level set budget without a proposition two and a half override. That override can only come from the voters of this town. But it needs to start with you right here in this committee. It needs to start with leadership, with strong leadership right here. If you put forth a budget that is anything other than level set services, it will give an easy out to our selectmen, to our finance committee, and to voters. Madam Chair, members of the board, I am asking you to be bold. I am asking you to show the great leadership that this town deserves. I am asking you to put it in front of the the selectmen, to put it in front of the finance committee, and to put it in front of these voters to make sure our community stays strong for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have Jessica and then four Kay, you'll be um following that. Jessica, can you give us a mic check? Yep, try again.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Your name and address, please, and then you may begin.
Thank you. Jessica Razzo, Carter Field Road. We moved to North Andover five and a half years ago for one reason and one reason only, the schools. At the age of three, I had a three-year-old and one-year-old twins. And despite having time before they actually started school, it was our number one priority to find a home we loved in a neighborhood we loved in a school system that we loved. And we wanted them to attend North Andover Public Schools. Up until a couple of weeks ago, I would have said it was without hesitation, it was the best decision we have ever made. My children are in third and first grade at the Kittredge and they love school. They love everything about their school. They're there almost every day to six P M. because of our work schedules. It's without a doubt their second home, a place they grow, learn, and are loved, and most importantly, feel safe and happy the way it should be. In the past couple of weeks, I have been struck by the emotional and powerful words that so many parents and teachers have shared about the effect your actions will have on so many. For weeks, you've heard our words. I want to remind you of some of your words, promises you made when you were asking for our votes. These are quotes that you all made. The role of a school committee member is to advocate for our children. The single obligation is to make our schools better. I plan to work with current school committee members to ensure we are advocates for the best interest of our children and doing everything we can to improve their educational experience to take a critical look at our budget and see how we can improve and find ways to fund our school's needs. The board is charged with holding management accountable for performance and ensuring that the stakeholders in our case, the parents, the students, the ta- the staff and taxpayers are getting the tools and resources and performance they need and deserve. We need to hold our leaders and elected officials accountable because accountability matters. We need to make sure that each student is seen and valued, that every family is embraced and listened to. It means that every time I vote, I will vote for what's best for the kids no matter what. We must be better for our children, better at ensuring that all students have the resources they need to be successful, better at equipping our facilities to to support twenty-first century learning expectations, better at planning and communicating with families, better at asking questions, and better at holding our leaders accountable. Last week, Mr. Hicks said when he was voting for superintendent that he doesn't want to take the easy way out of it, and he was choosing the controversial way because it was the right thing to do. You all made promises when you ran for your positions. Doing right what is right is never usually easy, and it's often hard. It is clear what the students, the teachers, and the parents want and deserve. I'm just asking that you speak up for our children and their education. That is your job, however hard it might be, and I'm please asking you to vote for a level service budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, up next, we have poor Kay and then Melissa's iPhone. Poor Kay, can you give us? I I hope I've been saying your your name correctly. Um, if you can give us a mic check.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, my name is Kathleen Poor, and um I am I reside at eighty-eight Hillside Road in North Andover. Um, and I am a sixth-grade mathematics teacher at North Andover Middle School. Um, I just want to say that back when I moved to North Andover back in nineteen ninety-four, um, it was very hard to find a teaching job. I worked in Lawrence for three years. I lost my job there because they had major cuts, and then I was one of the youngest uh staff members. So luckily, I applied to North Andover and I got a job, and I remember saying in my application letter that this was my home and I was hoping to teach here for my whole career until I retire. And now I'm about five years away from retiring. Um, I worked at Atkinson School in fifth grade uh from ninety-seven to two thousand and one, and then I came to North Andover Middle School in two thousand and one. Um, I've taught on two-person teams, three-person teams, four-person teams. My school, North Andover School, is an amazing place. I'm sorry, North Andover Middle School. Um, as a math teacher, all I want to say is I've been through those times that Christie Hale talked about when we had cuts. Uh, my children were in the schools at those times when we had the cuts. I was a sixth-grade teacher at a time when I had thirty-one, thirty-two students in the classroom. We cannot go backwards to that. Especially in these days where social emotional learning the needs of our children are more important than ever that we address as teachers. For people to say having, oh, we just have a class of thirty. No, it's not the same. It's not the same. Especially, we're still healing from COVID. The kids have come a long way in their math skills. Uh, things every they're starting to get caught up and back to normal, but we're still not there yet. And as a math teacher, it is imperative to be able to reach out to and help every one of those students and bring them from where they are to where they need to be. So I implore the school committee to please support our students, support our teachers. We have so many, I'm only speaking for the middle school because I've been there forever. We have so many wonderful teachers in our school. And these newer teachers we have, if they're cut, it would just be devastating. It really would be. We have a wonderful community now. And I just think it would be horrible to go backwards at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, up next, um, we have Melissa's iPhone, and then after that will be uh Joe La Croix. Melissa, can you give us a mic check, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Your name and address, and then you may begin.
Yep, my name is Melissa Nasta, and I live at fifty-eight Park Street. My daughter is a second grader right now at Kittredge Elementary School. Um, and to be honest, she is thriving there, and I feel it's closing down Kittredge would not only be heartbreaking for us as a community, but would have a long-term effect on our children. Um, she's thrived at Kittredge in part to the small class sizes and specialized educational experiences that she's gained there. For two years, for example, um, she was in the reading group um after school with Mrs. Jennings and then with her with some teachers at Kittredge who took time out of their day after hours to sit with a group of kids who needed extra support in reading. Um, and since doing that, she has no longer needed to go to the specialized reading group with Miss Jennings or even after school because she's reached the she's become such a good reader in just the short time that she's been there due to the extra support that she has. But I also have to give credit to the small class size that she is in. She's in the two C, three C with Mrs. Gannon, who um it's a language-based class. Um, she's able to have small group time and one-on-one time with her teacher, which has also helped with her progress in reading. Um, there's only fifteen children in her class, and that allows for her teacher to dedicate a portion of time to the small group work or one-on-one time. Um, I feel as though shutting down Kittredge, making cuts, taking away staff, it would just be devastating in so many areas. I'm not sure if any of the other schools in the area have the level, the language-based classrooms, but if they do, I I've heard that those class sizes are already at capacity. The ratio of students to teachers in other schools can make it difficult for children like my daughter that may need extra support to in in order to gain access to it. Increasing the classroom size and eliminating staff will only set our children back, thus setting them up for failure in the future. Um, my concern also lies with, you know, letting educators go and staff possibly needing to hire more, you know, what about bus drivers to take kids from, you know, the Kittredge area to the Sergeant area? I don't understand how we could get this many children to a school halfway across town. The teachers are the essence of our children's successful future. We need a solid education, and I fear that we will not get that by doubling our classroom sizes while eliminating our teachers in programs. Many families like myself moved to this town because of the school systems here, and we are known for having one of the best public school educations in Massachusetts. Why would we want to take that away or make decisions that could harm that reputation? Hurting the education system will cause less families to want to move here, in part making more of a deficit moving forward. As stated of the north on the North Andover School Committee website, the committee is responsible for establishing educational goals and policies that will guide the committee and the staff of the administration and continuing improvement of our educational programs provided by the school district. Therefore, shutting down the Kittredge School, firing teachers, and eliminating programs does the opposite. It does not provide educational goals or provide continued improvement of educational programs but causes irreparable damage that will only affect our children in the future. And as a concerned parent of the North Andover and a North Andover resident, I urge you to please consider how this will affect our children, our teachers, our elementary school staff, our families, our community, and the trust of the North Andover residents, and I'm urging you to please think of a level service budget before doing damage to our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, up next, we have Joe La Croix. Joe, can you give us a mic check? I can hear you. You may state your name and address and then get started.
Sure. Joe La Croix, uh, two ninety-one Appleton Street. Um, just want to say that I am for the level services budget as I've stated in previous other meetings. Um, I think two meetings ago, I asked a question and was hoping to get some sort of response at some point. Um, and maybe you guys can address it after public comment has closed. But in the event that we do push for an override um in order to fund the level services budget, is there a way that we can ensure that the fallback isn't the town manager's recommended budget? Um, that budget would be catastrophic to the students students in the district, and I think that we need to make sure that there's some sort of fall black fallback plan so that we don't, you know, go for an override, but then end up with nothing. Um, because it's not a sure thing. Um, I know myself and a lot of others will push as hard as we can, get the word out, show up. Um, but but I'm just curious if there's a way for us to, you know, seek all viable options in funding as well as shooting for the override. That's all.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else who would like to raise their hand to make public comment? Great, we have uh Vince, you'll be next, and then Sharon Hanson, you'll be after that. Vince, can you give us a mic check, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Your name and address, and then you may get started.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vince Grisetteau. I live in Salem, New Hampshire. I'm a French teacher at North Andover Middle School since two thousand and sixteen. I wanted to state my support for the level services budget. I don't believe it's possible to operate effectively with anything less than this amount of funding. I think about a typical day at the middle school. I can't imagine any good coming from having any fewer adults present in a building of almost a thousand students. The students of all North Andover schools need more professionals in our schools providing better access to collective sports, libraries, and programs to reach their full potential. Level services would be the bare minimum that we could give the children of North Andover. Anything less would be unworkable, damaging, and a disservice to the children and the staff who devote themselves to their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Sharon Hanson, and then Jessica O'Donnell, you'll be after that. Sharon, uh Sharon, excuse me. Can you give us a mic check, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. State your name and address, and then you may get started.
Sure. Hi, I'm
Sure. Hi, I'm Sharon Hanson. I live at one seventy-one Appleton Street. Um, I am a parent of a child that is on an IEP in special education. Um, I can tell you myself, as well as many other parents, um, with kiddos that are in special ed are very scared, we're nervous, um, we are, we've been struggling already to have, um, enough funding for the things that our children need. Um, just last week in a meeting, um, with the, with the school, um, I was told that a project that they were working on for kiddos with autism, um, no longer was going to happen. Um, a community skills program just because they didn't have enough funding. The, um, another program that has been offered throughout many years with the school system, um, was also being taken away because they don't have the funding. Um, anything more than a level service, less than a level service funding, it would be absolutely detrimental. I worry not only for my own child, but for the vast majority of kids um, that are on IEPs and that do require extra levels of support and what this would not only do academically, but also socially, emotionally, um, to the well-being of many of these students and as well to the teachers and staff. It's just not fair and it seems anything else would be negligent to not offer at least a level service. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have Jessica O'Donnell. Um, can you give us a mic check, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
I, I can hear you, Jessica, your name and address, and then you can get started.
Sure, um, Jessica O'Donnell at four eighty Boxford Street. Um, so I just wanted to speak to two points. Um, I'm the mother of an eighth grader and we went to the recent North Andover High School open house this week. And it was really amazing to meet the teachers and learn about the programs and special opportunities that are, you know, presented via electives and extracurriculars at the high school. But I have to say it was extremely unsettling to know that some of these options, electives, et cetera, may be cut based on um, some of the proposed budget options. So that really puts a lot of the incoming eight, um, freshman families in a difficult position because I don't really believe we understand as a parent population what our children will be receiving for next year. And, um, the principal seems wonderful and you know, that's great, but I, I feel like there's a lot of uncertainty there. But, um, I really wanted to speak a little more about special education. You know, today, our elementary school special education instructors are stretched too thin. The special education program as it stands is not providing the adequate services that our children deserve. You know, they're not receiving the support they need and our special education teachers, guidance counselors, and support staff are overwhelmed today at Sargent. They are overworked, working outside contracted hours and spending their own personal funds just to do their best to educate the children of North Andover. So when we see two proposed budgets that are not level service, you know, the suggestion of cutting forty to sixty staff members, it's nothing short of negligence. Not only is it negligence, but it's also setting up superintendent labor for failure. Today, our town is failing to prioritize the needs of its children. We need to go in the opposite direction. We need more teachers, more support staff, more licensed special education instructors and guidance counselors. Not fewer. If the goal of the school committee superintendent in the town is to provide our children with a quality education, we need to step up. We can't afford to move backwards. I understand that some restructuring may be necessary, but no one here is naive enough to believe that restructuring means reducing the number of teachers who help our children succeed. Um, the guidance budget and the alternative budget are an insult to every family who pays taxes in this town. And the alternative budget is simply not a viable option. Any grand plans for master facilities or future prosperity in this town should not come at the expense of our children's education today. There has to be a better way forward and I would really urge the school committee to vote for a level service budget for all of the families and children of North Andover. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up we have, uh, Tony Delmonico. Tony, can you give us a mic check, please?
Can you hear me, Joe?
We can hear you. You may state your name and address and then get started.
All right, great. Uh, Tony Delmonico, Amesbury, Massachusetts. Uh, North Andover High School educator since two thousand and six. Um, I'd like to comment on, uh, a previous um, comment regarding, uh, elective offerings at the high school. You know, in my time there, we had two art classes when I started and we've grown up to fifteen now. Um, now, not all of those courses run at the same time, of course, but we did that to provide students with context, with options uh, for advanced learning. Um, and it came to my attention just recently that it was proposed regarding, uh, how we would determine cuts at the high school in particular, uh, using a model of just, uh, what courses students elect to take. And I would just caution you that while, uh, my ceramics one class is, uh, quite popular with over four hundred and fifty requests, um, my oil painting class, uh, just by its very nature, um, had last year about sixty requests. Now, you put those numbers next to each other and anyone would come to the conclusion that, well, four fifty is certainly more than sixty, so let's get rid of that painting class. Uh, but I just wanted to warn you that you, you run a very strong risk of not only marginalizing some of, um, our more advanced learners, kids who come to school for that. You know, they may not, um, fit in the big boxes of band and chorus and things of that nature. Uh, but nonetheless, that, that makes their experience for them. Um, and then on the other end, uh, just a simple logistical piece to that. Um, I am the only, uh, art teacher at the high school who currently teaches that course and there is only one ceramic studio, uh, that I know of. Um, so it would be very difficult, um, to do that and I would just caution the board to explore, become more knowledgeable on the, uh, high school scheduling and the facilities available there, uh, before rushing to judgment. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Koenig, that is the end of our list. Um, have we gone for the full hour yet?
Um, I will leave it open just two more minutes here, see if anybody wants to jump in and then we're going to close it. I will remind everybody that we do also have a public comment session at the end that we will reopen up. Um, so if you didn't get a chance now, there will be a second opportunity.
I have two more hands, uh, three. So why don't we go with those three and then move on, Ms. Koenig? So we'll hear from, from Natalie Kindred, um, S. Archero, hope I did that right, and Lauren M. So, um, Natalie, um, can you give us a mic check, please?
Hello, hello.
Hello. Can you state your name and address and then you may get started?
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name's Natalie Kindred. I live at four twenty-one Stevens Street. Um, and I will be short and sweet. I'm the parent of two boys in the elementary school. Um, my parents also live in town and also vote, um, but I just wanted to make two quick points. And my first is just very big picture. Um, I just think our world is changing so fast right now. There's, there's so much risk and complexity and it's, you know, it really is a pivotal time technologically and geopolitically and in the information landscape. And I just think that education and critical thinking right now has never been more important and to cut back on education spending at this time honestly just feels like a, a failure on our part, our part as adults. Um, I just think we need to figure this out in a way that does not cut back on the quality of education that kids in our town are receiving and, you know, whatever we want to say and no matter that the efforts that, you know, everybody might put in to do the best they can within these cuts, cuts will lead to a reduced quality of education. It's just, um, in- inevitable. So, um, I am asking you to vote for a level service budget. My second quick point is that I also, like a couple others have said, had a little bit of trouble finding this link. Um, you know, I did see the email when the schools were closed, um, that the meeting was moving online. It seems like maybe including a link in that email or making it much more clear would, would allow for increased participation. And, um, my sense is that probably the amount of participation in this meeting is not reflective of the amount of people who may have wanted to participate. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, S. Ar- Archero, Arceo, I'm, I'm messing it up, so, um, let me push the button. Uh, can you give us a mic check, please?
Hello, hello.
Hello, yes, we can hear you, sir. Um, name and address and you may get started.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Uh, this is Jeff Arcearo, uh, ninety-three Winter Green Drive. Uh, and I just, I too wanted to, um, you know, show my support for the level services budget. Uh, and I think it's important, you know, I've, I've spoken previously in previous meetings about what exactly the level services budget means. So where are we? Where is the town of North Andover investing in our children? What, what does level services mean? So I think a number of speakers have already brought it up tonight that, you know, our investment already is not where it should be. If you look at Massachusetts State Foundation funding in the percentage of our investment over and above the minimum required investment in education, North Andover is in the bottom half of the state in that investment. And then if you also look at the cost per pupil that we have in North Andover, we are historically three thousand dollars less than the state. Uh, and to again, to put that in even what appears more drastic to me, you know, when I look at the Massachusetts uh, Department of Education website, uh, you would see that there are two hundred and fifty-eight districts, two hundred and fifty-eight districts who spend historic, who have higher cost per pupils in the state and only fifty-one that are lower. I think that is just alarming. Uh, and I also, you know, want to point out the fact that, you know, at the select board meeting last week, excuse me, the town manager uh, brought a point up that, you know, based on, I think it was some kind of consultant that we had, uh, there is a number of eight other towns that we are compared to that based on population, revenue, taxes, all of that. And I went back to look at Massachusetts, uh, education website again uh, and found out that we are eight, eight of nine in that list. Wilmington, Tewksbury, North Reading, Bill Ricker, Danvers, Wakefield, Reading, all above are spending more than North Andover is. There's Nuss at eight and then Chelmsford at number, at number nine. Again, the level services alone is not sufficient where we should be. Um, and just one last point is, you know, I know, um, there was a comment about being financially responsible and I totally agree. Uh, but I think sometimes, or I think not, not in all cases, is cutting the most financially responsible thing. In this case, I think the investment in education, the investment in our children is the more financially responsible action for this town in the long term. And I urge you again to support that level services budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and last we'll have, uh, Lauren M. Uh, Lauren, can you give us a mic check, please?
I can. Good evening.
We can hear you. Uh, name and address, then you can get started.
Great, thank you. Lauren Mercero, excuse me, two hundred Brentwood Circle, North Andover. So I'm speaking tonight again to support what others have shared about the level service budget. I feel like that really is our only way forward. And I would urge the school committee members to vote on that. I also echo what others have shared that this is the bare minimum and anything less than this is a severe disservice to our children. I have two children in the North Andover Public Schools in Neams and Kittredge. My student at Kittredge is on an IEP. He has struggled with reading since COVID. It's been very difficult. Excuse me. But given the support that he has had there, he has been able to become the best student that he can be. Another thing that I feel is important for everyone to keep in mind is how this is going to impact these students socially, socially and emotionally. And I understand it's been said in past meetings that, you know, the support that we have socially and emotionally is less than where we want to be as a district. So we know that there's improvement there. So to do anything less than a level service budget is going to just be so detrimental. So I just, I urge you to please vote for that and then as a group into encourage town leaders that we have to be better and we have to come up with a better plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
Ms. Koenig, there's one more person. Can we do go over just exactly to eight fifteen?
Yep, just one more and then, um, the remainder we'll defer to the second public comment session.
Thank you. Um, Dan Tyber, um, can you give us a mic check?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Thanks.
Your name and address and then you can get started.
Yeah, Dan Tyber, one sixty-two Hemetel. Good evening and thank you for, um, the time for everyone tonight. So I have a daughter in second grade at Kittredge, two sons, uh, sixth and seventh grade who both went to Kittredge and, um, you know, we heard a lot of personal stories about why people have moved here and, you know, many of these issues do echo my sentiments. That said, you know, despite our impassioned and thoughtful comments, there, there might be uh, a quiet population that is opposed to level services budget. And I want to address an important issue that hopefully speaks to those who either don't have a student still in our community or that are making a vote based on financial implications. So I'd like to address some of the potential uh, financial implications on property value when an elementary school closes. So studies have consistently shown that proximity to schools can significantly impact property values. Um, I have some data according to a report from the National Association of Realtors. Homes located within a good, good school district can see a price increase of up to twenty percent compared to similar homes in districts without highly rated schools. Kittredge is a very highly rated school and this just shows how critical schools are to the financial value of homes. Um, when an elementary school closes, this reverses that trend and the financial implications are immediate. And they, they often come with reduced demand in the local housing market. We know that home buyers, especially those with young children, avoid neighborhoods that have schools within walking distance. Um, I have some other figures. A twenty fifteen study from the National Bureau of Economic Research found when a school closes, home prices in the surrounding area drop as much as ten percent within the first year. And I shudder to think the implications within three to five years as, as this ma- may go on. So beyond that, the closure of a school is tied to a much broader list of economic challenges like declining population, there's other fiscal issues. The perceived stability of the area may diminish and what this means is that North Andover will simply become a less desirable location. We will see less opportunities for revenue generation and this, this has to lead to an even steeper decline in property values. So broadly speaking, when an elementary school closes, the effects on the housing market and the overall and financial environment are felt immediately. So for many families, you know, the proximity of schools, one of the primary reasons we, we choose to, to, to where, where to live. But the schools serve as a number one factor. It's the number one decision-making process for home buyers, especially those with young kids. So if we close such a strong school like Kittredge and redistrict everyone, families once looking into home, North Andover may look at other areas and other neighborhoods with better educational options. And we know that's going to lead to a decrease in demand for homes in the area. So I urge those who haven't observed or really considered the long-term financial implications, a level services budget. This is a smart move. This is a sound move that will move North Andu into a more favorable financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Koenig, um, Ms. Koenig, we are at the end.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the comments that have been made. Um, and as I mentioned before, we will have a second public comment section, uh, toward the end of our meeting for those that wish to still speak. We are going to go into the superintendent's report for around the district.
Hey. So this slide, uh, shows you the eighth grade transition night that was held at North Andover High School. I think our student reps talked about it, but it was well-attended. Um, actually more students, uh, participated than North Andover High School had expected, which was great to see. Here you'll see some of the student-led, uh, meetings that were happening, some of the conversations. And then they even had an opportunity for parents to, um, get some information from a current And then they even had an opportunity for parents to um, get some information from a current North Andover High School parent. So I thought I would lead out with that tonight. And on the next slide, just talking about some of the things that have been going on in the district with some of the things I've been doing. It's been a while since we've had a superintendent's report, so you'll see um, some dates by dates going back to January. Um, but really, the bulk of this time from the last time I had a report was really working on our school budget. So our principals and central office meeting work that we've been doing has been on budget work. We are also preparing for the MCAS um, where MCAS is shifting to a new platform this year. So there has been work, some, some work we've been doing with our leaders to get ready for that. I have um, been able to have some listening sessions. I spent um, some time with the North Andover Middle School staff listening to, to, to them. Uh, so as I've shared in the past, when I do this, I bulk about, I book about ninety minutes. I'm at the school with some opportunity for any staff who wants to come and speak to me. Sometimes people come um, one-on-one, other times they come in teams. Um, but I was really pleased at North Andover Middle School that I was busy the whole time I was there chatting with folks. Um, I attended a sergeant school PTO meeting. Uh, I met with the sergeant school staff, uh, largely around the budget issues. Um, again, we had a leadership meeting that was focused on budgets. On, in, in January, I had the opportunity to go to the LPAC meeting, which is our English Language Parent Advisory Group. They are at Stevens Memorial Library. Um, and uh, our director Kathy Keenan was showing them all about the library, how to use the library, multiple ways that they can access the library, and some of our parents signed up for a library card, which was really great. Also, in January, we had our Wait Until Eight program. This was a virtual event that was hosted by the Parent Resource Network. It was a wonderful event. Um, we had many people sign up, not as many people attended that signed up, but we do have a recording that all of our leaders have sent out to staff. Um, and I would really encourage families to go and listen to that recording. Um, the Parent Resource Network on their website has many resources and how to help your teens and your students with cell phones. Um, and uh, and technology and screen time. I think that if you are a parent of a younger child, I would really encourage you to, to view this recording. Really, the premise of the talk was about was pledging until eighth grade to not give your child a smartphone, um, not to say that they can't have some of the smaller phones. Um, and then really talking about how you gradually introduce a smartphone to a student. Um, it was a really, it was a great presentation. I'm really grateful to the Parent Resource Network for providing that. I was at the Atkinson School also having a listening session, and again, I was really pleased that I was um, visited by staff members the whole time I was there. I think I mentioned this last time, but I was able to go to Legally Blonde and the robotics competition. There's a few pictures there. They're not great. Um, I did snap that one at Legally Blonde, but they do say no cell phones, and I was trying really hard to follow the rules while I was there. On uh, January twenty-seventh, both Assistant Superintendent Kristen Ando and I participated in the superintendent webinar. Um, the webinar was really to help us navigate some of the um, um, political um, orders that may have been put, been put forth um, in terms of funding, federal funding, and whether or not we'll have access to our federal funds. Um, and we will continue to um, participate in all of the webinars that Desi puts out um, to make sure that we are um, apprised and that we are um, advocating for our school district. I um, had the opportunity to participate in Leading Now, which is a national organization for superintendents. Um, I was invited to attend. Um, I went through an interview process and I was selected. Um, it's a wonderful opportunity. Um, I have a coach through Leading Now um, and a cohort of other superintendents, um, both from the surrounding area and from across the nation. Um, and it was a wonderful time to be able to um, think about goal setting and uh, some budget work and to be able to um, work with other superintendents on a national level. Um, I do participate in the Merrimack Valley Superintendent Cohort, but it was great to have a perspective on a national level. We had the Kittredge School Building Committee meeting this week. I'm sure um, Mr. Brown will talk a little bit more about that when we get there. And then I failed to mention that last night, um, I had uh, my office hours. Um, it, we were attended probably about maybe fifteen or twenty or so uh, community members, again, largely focused on the budget, but it was a really nice um, conversation. I was able to answer lots of questions. Um, and people were able to um, just talk freely and will continue to do that process. And then today I called my first No School Day. Um, I'm not sure what's more uh, nerve-wracking, putting together a budget or uh, trying to decide whether or not we should have school. Um, but hopefully everyone enjoyed their day today. Um, and um, I, I know people are always anxious about uh, when we're going to call that No School Day, and we will try to uh, make sure that we get that information out to everyone. Then I wanted to give you a budget update on this slide. It shows you um, where we are right now. So we are anticipating a budget deficit of about three point six million, almost three point seven million. We do have some offsets um, to be able to close that budget deficit that are listed there, uh, but still looking at a deficit of about one point four million. I think the next slide um, gives you a perspective of where we, I'm going to go to the next one.
Sorry, just, Pam, I was, I'm sorry, Superintendent Lether, um, just in terms of the, the last slide that showed the, the funding sources to close the gap, would you mind just highlighting which of those still need to be voted on? Versus which are those that we have? Because I think that's important for people to know, like, there's these, these are votes that will happen at town meeting as well for some of these funds, if I understand correctly.
Correct. I believe everything other than the special education stabilization need to be voted on top at town meeting.
Two million to cover roughly, to cover our current deficit will be items that will be on at town meeting for all of us to vote on.
Correct. And then in the next slide, it shows the comparison since the last time. So the last time we had a budget update was January seventh. And you'll see we're about a million um, off from that. I just want to point out, you'll notice that the um, the changes, if I was in person, I'd be pointing to it, but in terms of salaries, um, we reallocated some of our salaries to grants that we could do. Um, we've had a couple of positions, people in the district who left a position, and we didn't rehire those positions. That's why that funding is a little bit lower than um, you had seen in the time before. That was the end.
Um, Madam Chair, can I ask, uh, superintendent question?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Yep, um, so just want to make sure I understand here, so that the um, the grand total projection deficit grew, grew slightly, right, from three point five to three point six eight?
It did.
With all things, all things balanced out, all things added up.
All things balanced out. But I want to tell you, this is a very surface-level look. Um, we've been very fortunate to have Gail Dowd with us. Uh, Gail has spent hours with each of our class centers, really um, projecting we'll have, we at our next school committee meeting, we'd like to share with you um, the work that she's been doing um, and give you a, a more detailed uh, look at all of our expenditures that we're anticipating this school year. Gail is on here. I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that, Gail.
Thank you, Superintendent. Yes, we are currently similar to what we did to the budget. We're doing a full bottoms-up assessment of FY twenty-five, meeting with all the various department heads, reviewing the revolving accounts, reviewing all of the grants. So it's taking a little bit of time, but I think it's time very well spent in putting various processes and different practices in place. So as Superintendent mentioned, we're hoping to come to the next meeting with a much more up, a better update that'll give a lot more information as to the areas that we are seeing deficits and where we've been able to see some savings.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that update. We're going to move into the Chair's Report. Um, we're going to start out with the committee chat recap. We did have a school committee chat this past Saturday, February first, um, at Central Office. Uh, I was able to attend for the hour in place of Mr. Moskovich, who had an unforeseen circumstance that he had to miss, unfortunately missed the meeting. Um, so I stepped in for, for, for an hour, then I, I had to shoot out for my daughter's birthday party. But Mr. Hicks uh, was there as as well as Phillips from the Select Board. Um, and I will let Mr. Hicks jump in on that recap.
Yeah, I think we had twelve to fifteen people there for the duration. We ended up being there till one thirty, one forty-five, um, so almost two o'clock, um. Really great questions and conversation with people about what it means to um, advocate and the process that we need to go through to get the more funding, um. We talked about this a little bit at our public meeting last week, but um, the reasons why we have excess levy capacity, it was part of the plan that the town had put in place to be able to do some master plan facilities, um. So that's, that, that's there on purpose to allow for that and to allow for us to not bear the burden of Amazon's taxes, um. We also know that although um, our town has changed recently, town meeting still looks, is been the same thing for a long time, and the same people show up and making uh, something happen at town meeting is a very difficult task. Um, so we talked about the process that that could look like, and people had questions about what happens, um. But I, I thank everyone for, for being there. It was, it was nice to be able to chat with people face-to-face in a less formal setting. I do, and even when it's about a hard thing, I do enjoy that setting much better than this.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. I, I agree. It was nice to be able to have a little bit more intimate conversation with people um, about the budget and things that they were concerned about and to have that um, easy back and forth that we don't always get. So that was, that was very nice. And I, I appreciate the people who were able to, to make it out and really voice concerns and and uh, thank you to Mr. Hicks for being available and staying um, that extra hour and a half and to um, Ms. Phillips as well for being present. All right. On our agenda, we were to approve two MOAs. Um, unfortunately, we weren't able to discuss those in executive session. We had to cancel that due to some difficulties. When we have executive session, we need to open up in public, but since we had to switch to a digital format, it just did not make it possible for us to be able to follow the rules that we need to be able to do that. So that is going to be deferred until next meeting. Moving on to school building committee updates. Uh, Mr. Hicks, do we have anything on the North Andover Middle School?
We were supposed to have a meeting today, but it got canceled and postponed until Tuesday. Um, I feel like this might be the second to last meeting. We have some um, a couple more invite voices to approve and some small updates, but there was very little left to do. Um, so we are nearing the end, um. So I will have more next time we meet because we are meeting as a committee on Tuesday at four.
All right, thank you. And then we'll move to Mr. Brown for the Kittredge Elementary School update.
Yes, so we met uh, on Tuesday, two days ago. Um, there were three new options presented, uh, you know, if, if uh, the decision is to give the ability to locate the building anywhere on the site. Um, I, you know, uh, if, if, if we tonight decide that we're going to um, potentially move uh, the uh, Kittredge students, then we would have a free ability to locate anywhere on the site. So uh, we had previously asked the architects and the project manager, take a look at what could be done then and what, what the difference would be. Uh, so they presented us with uh, three new sites, uh, three new plans, rather. Uh, in all of which uh, center uh, the structure on the property, roughly center of the structure on the property. And they identified five principal advantages of doing that. It provides better isolation from the neighbors. Uh, it provides a safer construction environment with students obviously are not present. Uh, it likely also reduces construction costs, although there are no uh, figures given for that. Um, you know, the project will move more smoothly if, uh, you know, if, if, if it can operate freely. Uh, the third one was better traffic flow options for pickup and drop-off, and particular with respect to how the curb cuts and um, traffic flows on Main Street. Um, there's an advantage in the new architecture that the classrooms can be east and west facing rather than north and south, and that provides some more efficiency in heating and cooling. Um, wasn't considered a major thing, but it is an advantage. And then lastly, uh, consolidated parking scenario. Um, it's all the options there provide an easier way to, to kind of distribute the parking across the site. Uh, there's a new schedule now. Uh, we're going to meet as a building committee again on February eighteenth and March fourth to review the decision the school committee makes and, and uh, work to finalize the, the schematic review submission plan that goes to the MSBC, the Mass School Building Committee. And there'll also be a community, another community forum now on my, scheduled for March twelfth. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I know, Ms. Lether, if you were also at that meeting, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, I think Mr. Brown did an excellent job. I am just, and also in terms of the heating and cooling, just talked about natural sunlight um, with the east to west as opposed to the north to south, and I believe that the play area um, on the, what they're calling as a clear site. Um, that's a little bit of more options of putting the, the player in a more, not appropriate, but um, a little bit larger and a little bit more conducive to what they'd like to see it.
Ms. Koenig, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Brown, um, does the construction timeline stay the same still?
Yeah, they, they didn't mention any material change to that, other than, obviously, yeah, other than obviously if there's no students there, then there's less likelihood.
It's a different project.
Yeah.
Um, and then perhaps, uh, Ms. Koenig, it's appropriate this time to clarify, um, people have been asking at the community chat, um, that we're missing a year um, in our calculations of when Kittredge would potentially, if we were to make some choices, when it would be available to open, and we keep, we were saying um, in twenty-nine, and I think the clarity that we were able to figure out is that would be fiscal year twenty-nine. And we always identify the fiscal year by the end of the year. So fiscal year twenty-nine um, is actually three years from now because we're currently, um, so if we were to do it, the building would be closed for three years and then open in September of twenty-eight, which is the very beginning of fiscal year twenty-nine. So that answers, I think, some of the confusion that people had earlier. Um, we call our fiscal years, um, weirdly. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And I could just add, sorry, a little, just one more piece of clarity that, on the play areas, because I don't know that uh, Superintendent Leth reminded me about that, that, uh, I think what she was trying to get at was that by centralizing the building, you can kind of, you can put the play areas in a way that provide better visibility to the staff from the building and also take, uh, it's the most efficient way to lay them out. So those were the two points that they made about that.
That was much better said. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. Um, okay. We're going to go into the FY twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar as our continued business. We did vote on this last meeting for the post-Labor Day start, but I believe there was one issue that was brought to our attention that we need to address, and that is the December twenty-third as a half-day.
Correct. Traditionally, we have a half-day before we go into our um, winter break. Um, this year we had a full day because it landed on a Friday. Um, but in, in all of years past, we always had a half-day. So wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, so we need to discuss as a committee if we want to continue to have that date as a half-day or to leave it as a full date.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the uh, approved school calendar to make December twenty-third, twenty-five a half-day.
Do I have a second? Okay, I will second that motion. All right, any discussion on, on that motion?
Yeah, I would just like to, Superintendent Lether, what do you recommend we do? A half-day on the twenty-third, is that?
I think a half-day makes sense. Traditionally, families, you know, there are families that want to travel. Uh, hopefully with a half-day, they'll participate in the half-day of school before they leave, rather than losing a whole day of school.
Thank you.
And as long as we serve large accounts as a full day of school. So it doesn't impact our ending of the school year, correct, Superintendent?
Correct.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, then I will move to a vote. Uh, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Did it come off muted?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier? Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that will be amended. And Ms. Lathrop, just to clarify, we are still waiting on the teacher development dates, um and so that that will be further adjusted, correct?
We will, that will be further adjusted, we have um, we have some conversation right now on our leadership team and we will be reaching out to our um. Teachers and staff as well about our current use of the Wednesday um one hour, you know. One hour PD for our staff or two hour PD for our staff and the Wednesday half days. Um, I think probably you all may have received some um communication from families about. Those days, I know we have received some, and we also were wondering if that is the best educational um plan moving forward for our students. Having those consistent half days, so we're we're studying that right now and then we'll come forward to you with our proposals.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Um. Ms. Lethard, um with that being, we would be able to come to that resolution before um. Too long, so it doesn't impact if parents need to make different childcare arrangements through community programs and all that, that we would know that well in advance.
Correct, we're we're working on that right now.
Awesome, thank you.
Welcome. Ms. Ando is leading the charge on that.
Okay, so now we will move on to the. FY twenty six budget discussion.
Hey, is that me?
That is you, yes.
Okay. Um, so uh in linked here and linked in the agenda, it was both the original um. FY twenty six budget presentation, the original one that we have made, and then I have something I'd like to go through with you tonight. Um, before I start, I just started here with the budget directives that everyone can see, but um. I I want to share that we have heard what the public has been saying, um we've listened. Um, the school committee members, I'm sure you have received many emails, I know I have received many emails. Um, we took some time to pause and to process and to think about the information that we received. I'm going to share with you tonight um an an alternative, alternative budget for lack of better words, or sharing with you another budget. Um, I think this is a um. It is directly from the comments that I've heard, it's from listening to to the people, listening to public comment. Um, listening to the needs wherein families talked about keeping our class sizes lower than twenty five, meeting the needs of our students, preserving special education. Um, and I think it's, this is something that um. We feel is an appropriate budget if we're not able to um have a level service budget. Now, I want to preface this by saying there are some new ideas in this budget and there are some things that are that are going to still be challenging for some people and there are going to be some. Some things that I share that I know not everyone is going to like. Um, but we do believe that this is a budget that really meets our directives and um addresses many of the things. That people have shared with us during public comment. So the slides look just a tiny bit different, and what we tried to do is make it clear so that everyone can follow along. So the first budget you see is the guidance budget. And the money appropriated towards by guidance budget. Then I shared with you level service that we've already talked about. And what, how much additional funds we would need in order to get to a level service budget. Then in blue, you see the alt, what we had called the alternative budget. Um, and the funds that we need to get to the alternative budget. The new budget that I'd like to share with you tonight is in purple, it's a sixty nine million, one hundred and seventy four thousand, five hundred and ninety one and eighty nine cents budget. And it's four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty nine cents. Addition addition to the guidance budget in order to meet this. I'm gonna walk you through and I hope it's clear so that you can see the difference between the budgets. So in the pre-K to five, what we show first is the guidance budget and you can see the cuts that we would have to make in the guidance budget, which I think we all know would be very difficult and. Uh challenging for our district, level service budget are no cuts. In the blue is what we were once considering what we called the alternative budget and shared that the budget, the cuts were less than the guidance, but they were still. A considerable amount of cuts. The sixty nine million dollar budget. In the elementary schools um would be a reduction of ten to twelve teachers, the reason you see a range is as we're narrowing this down and we start to think about the complexity of the. The CBAs, the um collective bargaining agreements that we have, that the range, the number we have. Um, been using might slightly differ depending on the the teacher who who we may lay off. And that's why you see a range of ten to twelve teachers, those ten to twelve teachers include both classroom teachers and specialists. We would not need to lay off any teaching assistants, we would not lay off a counselor. We would not decrease lead teacher stipens, there would be no reduction to the school budgets, there would be no reduction to staff stipends. It does recommend, however, closing Kittredge School and the change here would be shifting the students to both to to three schools, to Sergeant, to Franklin and Atkinson. These are schools when we looked at, as I've talked to you before, that Kittredge School is very interesting in the way that the property lines, the way it's. We that children come to the Kittredge School, there are some children who actually live closer to Sergeant. There are some children who actually live closer to Franklin and some families that live closer to Atkinson School. So we have looked at those neighborhoods and and moved the students into those neighborhood, to to their neighborhood schools. Next slide. We took the uh opportunity to show you what a class size would look like with the sixty nine million dollar budget, so you can see here. That it would um bring all of our classes to twenty five or below, I think the lowest class size would be eighteen. Um, so we reduced all of the classes that were twenty seven, if you remember in the past, both Thompson Thompson School had twenty seven students in both of their third grade. Third grade classes and fourth grade classes and Sergeant School, I believe, had twenty seven in their fourth grade class. This is a redistribution of the Kittredge students to three schools. We are going under the assumption that ABECC will have fifteen classes, they have fifteen classes this year, we have not done um kindergarten enrollment yet um. And that number could change depending on the amount of students that come into the ABECC. In the middle school. Again, you see the guidance budget, you see the level service budget, you see the changes in the alternate budget. Now I'd like you to really focus on the purple budget, which is the sixty nine million dollar budget, we would have a reduction of six to eight teachers. Again, the range is six to eight because of the collective bargaining agreements and where that teacher falls in the pay scale and what that may look like. We would reduce one counselor. And we will reduce office staff, the academic coaches, the teaching assistant, the librarian and the reduction to school budget all come back in. What this means in the um, I'll talk about the impacts a little bit at the end. Next, at North Andover High School, if you focus on the purple budget again, the sixty nine million, it's seven to nine teachers and and um. We'll talk about this in the impact a little bit, but that is looking at elective classes mostly, and I'll talk about that. But it brings back, and you noticed I did in the guidance budget, bring even in the guidance budget, we would be bringing back the library media specialist. But it brings back the library media specialist, the counselor, two teaching assistant, no reduction athletics, no reduction to Scarlet Night Academy. No reduction to the school budget, but we would reduce office staff, I highlighted in yellow the things that we would still continue to reduce. Special special education with a sixty nine million dollar budget, there would be no reductions. For system wide with a sixty nine million dollar budget, there would be no reductions. For maintenance with a sixty nine million dollar budget, there would be no reductions. For central office with a sixty nine million dollar budget, we would continue to um reduce both expenses in the central office and we would. Eliminate one central office staff member. In our nursing department, we would in a sixty nine million dollar budget still eliminate one nurse. So what this means for elementary, again, that's ten to twelve classroom, ten to twelve teachers, that's classroom teachers and specialist included in that. Our class sizes go from eight, go to a range of eighteen to twenty five. And it does temporarily close Kittredge and our students are reassigned to Sergeant Franklin and Atkinson. And the middle school will be a reduction of six to eight teachers, this would be restructuring the teacher teams, so traditionally now we have about fourteen teachers on a team. It might be looking at two teacher teams and and sixth, seventh and eighth, some two teacher teams where teachers teach more than one subject. Class size would be twenty four to twenty six, we would reduce the uh tier two support teacher that we have and we would do make reductions to office staff. At the high school, the reduction would be seven to nine teachers and that is less electives, I think you had a teacher that talked about that um during public comment. Our students are currently doing course selection, we would look carefully at core course selection to help us determine. Where we might be able to make those cuts, we have obviously um Ms. Holman uh and her leadership team have some proposals. That we're looking at, but we also want to be aware of the fact that our students are currently making course selection. Class sizes for um college prep courses will be twenty five to twenty seven, class sizes for the honor courses will be twenty six to twenty eight. And class sizes for the AP courses would be twenty eight to twenty nine, um and we would reduce office staff. Central offices, I said, we'd have a reduction of office staff and we would um reduce conferences and meetings. And then in our system, system wide, we would reduce one nurse and one counselor. That's the last slide, um and I know this is new information for everybody, so it's a lot to take in, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I'll go around and I'll let all the committee members um. Ask their questions, I did have just before we we get in, when we talked about, when you put in there that we you'd be adjusting. Kittredge students to Sergeant Franklin and Atkinson. Um, will that have any significant impact or change in transportation and balancing it all, or is it going to remain the same?
No, it's gonna remain the same, I already had our transportation coordinator um look at the routes, that's. Uh, she helped me determine which streets would go to Franklin, which streets would go to Atkinson, which streets would go to Sergeant School. Um, and there's buses that are already on the routes of those those homes and we can accommodate those children.
Thank you, um I'll let the other committee members jump in, we'll start with Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, uh Ms. Conan, uh Superintendent Lethard, would the transportation costs increase if we went? Uh with if the um all students from Kittredge went to Sergeant?
I want to say no, um we believe that again, that pathway um. It might be a little bit longer bus ride for some students because they're going to Sergeant, but no.
Um, on the slide with the projected uh classroom numbers, um. What is the class, uh what is the uh current size of classrooms at the ABECC?
We currently have fifteen classrooms and I believe there are twenty two and twenty three students in the kindergarten classrooms this year.
Um, I I don't have any just yet, Ms. Conan, still processing.
All right, we will go on to Mr. Moskovich.
Thank you, um Ms. Conan. Uh, Ms. Lathrop, I guess. My first question is. You, I noticed a different wording under the, I guess, the the purple budget and yellow, if I remember the colors right. Um, in terms of where the Kittredge students. I'm sorry, between the purple and the blue then. Uh, right, so. Is this more or less expensive to shift students to Sergeant Franklin and Atkinson, or is it actually? A part of what enables you to get to the uh lower class size target?
It's what enables us to get to the lower class size target um.
I thought I thought that might be the case.
We could. I, we, we, I can't add in, we added five additional classes to Sergeant School in the sixty seven million dollar budget, the alternative budget. And if I was to try to reduce that to to get them under twenty five, um we have a space issue.
I see, okay, thank you. Um, I noticed that one of the other differences between blue and purple is the hundred thousand dollars for special education, I wonder. If you could comment more about how that would. What would be the consequence of that cut?
Hold on, we'll go to that one. In special education, there will be no cuts in the purple and the in the sixty nine million dollar budget, I like how we're calling them but colors now, the purple budget. Um, hundred thousand dollars in the alternative budget are three teaching assistants, I mean four teaching assistants, excuse me. So it'll be less teaching assistance, so what we, you know, we listened to what we were hearing and um. There was a lot of concern that we didn't have enough support of teaching assistance to our students and we didn't have enough special education. Support and we were able to leave the special education budget. Um, as as is, as the same as it would be in a level service budget. And we put back the reserve, so if you remember, we had four hundred thousand dollars or we have four hundred thousand dollars we put in reserve. For out of district tuitions and transportation and this allows us to keep that reserve.
For. Is the reserve is for transportation or is for specialized general expenses?
It's for out of district uh tuitions as well as out of district. Transportation, Gail's nodding her head, so I got it right.
All right, I I I seem to remember that um. When we discussed, I guess, almost a year ago with the manager. The ending of what used to be a five, I think, half a million dollar reserve. Thought she said that she was actually not eliminating it, but transferring it to the. That that she preferred to to have that risk carried by the finance committee. Reserve is is, do I remember that right?
I think.
I see Mr. Hicks nodding his head.
He's nodding his head um.
Yeah, we we've, we've been making that, doing that shift over the past couple of years at town meeting, so we don't have a specialized stabilization fund. I think we have sixty five left in it this year, but that might be the end of it, um instead, we now have a five income. Um, reserve fund that can be, there's an understanding that it can be used for um. Special education costs, last year, we used a chunk of it to cover our budget deficit, um but we've been, and it's one point five million, we we replenish that each year traditionally at town meeting.
I see Gail with her hand up.
I'm sorry, thank you, if I if I may, this. We're calling it a reserve, but this is really for instances in which we know we have discussions in place where there is a strong. There is a potential that we will have changes in placements or additional students going out, so this is really. More so for items that we have a fair certainty that they are going to occur, that we felt it was prudent to keep in. Typically, the stabilization or. The the other type of reserve is really if you have something that may not have been on your radar or a student moves into the district, so. That's how we were looking at this a little differently, these were instances in which we. There is a strong probability that they're going to occur, so we built them into the budget.
So I had a both a comment and a question. Uh, the phrase teacher leaders hasn't previously appeared in the budget. And this is something that you and Ms. Ando are doing that I think is very exciting and. It might be helpful if you just explained a little bit about what that is.
So we have been fortunate to have teacher leaders in our district, we call them um, what do we call them? FCI's, facilit. Facilitators of collaborative inquiry, sorry, um and we proposed in. Both the guidance budget and in the alternative budget of of reducing them um and in the uh sixty nine million dollar budget. We are putting those funding back in and um. Looking at them as ways um of continuing our teacher leader program, working in a partnership. With other leader, other teachers within their building um. Sometimes you might hear the word coach, um traditionally in the past, our coaches have had non-teaching responsibilities, but this is an opportunity. Um, to continue to grow our coaching program um and have our teachers serve as leaders, um really becoming masters in the curriculum and then working with. Um, teachers within their own building to unpack that curriculum, to understand the curriculum, to deliver the curriculum. Um, which goes really hand in hand with the work that Ms. Ando is doing in terms of uh professional development days and making sure that they're as efficient as we'd like to see them.
So, a- as I understand it, this is part of the the two steps that that the district has taken in recent years, one. the two steps that that the district has taken in recent years. One is to move to research based curriculum. And then another is taking advantage of some material from the Department of Education about curriculum materials that have higher expectations for student performance. Though these, these are ways of of improving educational outcomes that are really separate from class size. And and it takes a while for teachers who haven't had training when they were in college to do this sort of thing. So my characterization, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, is this is really teachers helping other teachers or teachers working together to improve instruction of that.
Correct, yes.
Fair characterization.
Yes, that's a very fair characterization.
So when we last talked about this, I think I mentioned that you, we have some outside coaching, which is only now is all covered by federal Title I programs. And you mentioned that it might be a good idea to apply that in all the schools. And I wonder if, is that in, where does that stand in these budgets? Putting money into bring outside coaching into all the schools.
That would be factored into both our curriculum budgets. And in, we would continue to use some of our federal funds to be able to do that. But you're right, right now, we are using some outside consultants to support our schools that receive federal funding. And we would like to move that to all of our schools next year.
So is, if we vote for the blue or purple budget, would that be in or out? Is it already in there or would you need to make a slight amendment to include, to do that?
We would be closer to being able to include all of our schools in the, in the sixty nine million dollar, the purple budget.
Those are my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yes, hi, thank you. Couple of questions here. So, so I'm trying to understand the impact on NAMs here in the case of the purple budget. I think you you mentioned that that we might be going down to two teacher teams, or we probably would be.
Correct.
So did, how about the level of paraprofessional support for that and, you know, TAs and so on, reading specialists, et cetera? Does that stay the same? And the just the class side, I'm just trying to understand the impact there.
Correct, that stays the same. However, the, there's a tier two reading teacher, tier two, so there's a tier two support at the, at NAMs. And we, that that position would be eliminated, but but teaching assistance would stay the same. We have a special education reading teachers, we have special education teachers, we have programming, that does not change.
Okay, and, okay, so that's that. Then, then, next question I had was, you know, in the scenario where now we're taking Kittredge students and distributing them to three places. Previously, I know the, I know the thought process was to try to keep them together, right? Obviously, that can't happen in this case. But you also had mentioned, I think, earlier that in that, in that previous, in the, in the, sorry, in the blue, the blue budget, you were going to sort of open up possibilities for for families who wanted to do it, right? Who maybe wanted to go somewhere besides Sergeant could.
Yeah, so we had talked about that, giving some opportunity, because we would, you would seen in the enrollment chart that we showed, that there were still some spaces. What we did in the sixty nine million or the purple budget is we made those determinations based on neighborhood. So it keeps kids in closer proximity to the school that they're going. It doesn't preclude from a family from still asking. So if you get assigned to Sergeant, but you were really hoping to go to Franklin, it doesn't preclude a family from asking. But in the sixty nine million dollars, to be completely transparent, the students will be assigned to a school.
Okay, and so, you know, a case by case basis, if someone makes a case and you can do it, you'll do it, right? I mean, that would, I assume that's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then I think it would be useful to, if you could put up that class size chart again. Yes, so this is what would be, right, if we adopted the purple budget?
Yes.
Okay, so currently, the is true, Kittredge, right, traditionally has smaller classes than everyone else, is a smaller school, right? So their, their numbers now are yeah, I know you can't probably produce them on the spot, but are they generally?
Right now, Kittredge is between fourteen and twenty one.
Okay, and they do have a couple of those combo grade classes.
Correct, two, three and a four, five, and those are the lowest classes.
Okay. So is it correct, is it correct to say that, that what this does is it tries to, it tries to take the district as a whole, right, and minimize the numbers for everybody, right? That's the, that, that was kind of the constraint you put on yourself here.
Correct.
Okay.
And it stays within the guidance. So I think in the, if you remember in the directives, school committee was between eighteen and twenty seven, but preferred it to to be eighteen to twenty five and only to twenty seven if, you know, if we had to. This brings everybody below, I don't believe there's anybody at twenty five with this configuration. And I know that some families have talked about the, the program, the two, three classroom and the four, five classroom, and that that classroom is it functions as both a general classroom and a classroom for students with some special needs. And it would be what we call a district program. Lynn O'Neil, our Director of Special Education, is still planning on, will be programming for students who need what may be a language based classroom. And we will be, that will be part of the bigger plan and talking about all of our district programs. But but students who have those needs, their needs will still be met. But we're not proposing a, to, we're not proposing the the classroom, that structure to stay the same in that two, three, four, five model.
Okay. One, one more question, if I might, this is really got, this is really like a general question. But, you know, with all the news lately about the Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education, and I realize that it's not directly related to this, but are we at risk of a significant funding problem because of that, right, that kind of overshadows all of this or not? In other words, how much of our budget is federally funded?
Yeah, so the budget that you see in front of you does not include our federal funding title grants. So we would be able to continue our curriculum and the operations that we have moving forward if our federal grants were affected. I think it's some of the work that Gail did when she was working, with Gail Dow did when she was working with our leaders and saying, you know, what is a grant that may be going away that we need to to move into the general budget. But we do, we are able to do work through our title grants. And we do support schools who are either have a, a lower socioeconomic standing in that school, so those are our Title I schools. And if we, if funding changes, that will affect us in a different way that we'll have to talk about as a community.
Okay, but it doesn't, it doesn't directly impact these numbers.
No.
Okay, that's really my question. I I realize, of course, in other words, the federal money that we get now is all via grant. It's not, it's not part of the operating budget, for lack of a better word.
Correct.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, Ms. Cormier.
Superintendent Letherup, my questions are probably, a lot of my questions got answered already, so some of the ones I have left are around, if you can go back, probably the the second slide that shows kind of the overview of the, of the, yeah, this one. So this shows the, our four choices right now from guidance budget to the two alternatives, level services. And how much each of those, other than guidance, is over the guidance budget amounts at the six point nine to two point seven, four point three. Just trying to think ahead. Whichever one of those, like, thinking just from the, say, of the alternative budgets, those two. Thinking ahead till next year. And to assume one of the, one of these three, four budgets, hopefully not guidance, so let's say three, it's approved, we move, we move ahead. You have the the opportunity with your team to work. They'll make great changes with it, you know, the appropriate changes within the school, great things. What is level services look like in the next school year? So all of these programs that you're doing, that you'd want to maintain next year. I just wanted, as we're thinking about how the mechanics of how as a town, we're going to fund these increases from guidance. I want to make sure that we're thinking ahead, assuming you're getting us to a point we want to level two and maybe even increase more of it level two. What are we going to be asking next year? And I guess why I'm the leading question to kind of say, is this setting us up to automatically have to go to an override next year, if not this year? What direction are we going in?
Well, we have to take into consideration, I mean, I think I've said this before, that about eighty three to eighty five percent of our budget is salaries. And we would have to take into consideration all of our collective bargaining agreements that we have. And and that will have an impact on our budget next year.
I mean, things are kind of back at, back of napkin. I mean, we know we, at least for next year, we're going to have probably what I like, you know, two and a half million, just in terms of increases from our collective, the collective bargaining agreements we've already agreed to. We think about just level services, so that these, the level services budgets, just thinking through to the next year are going to be most likely problematic for funding as well, or at least we're going to continue down this path. I think a fair statement, we're going to continue to have to.
I think we're going to continue to have to work. I think that budget recovery is is challenging and it's going to take us some time. I I do think that that in conjunction with the work that that Ms. Dow is doing with each of our leaders and the time spent really sort of building up the budgets and in the work that we will do as a district determining if we're, we're, we're spending all of our money in the ways that we want to be able to be spend, spending our money. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to be honest and say that I have been in this position since April of last year and we have been in a recovery state and we haven't been as fully staffed as we'd like to. And I believe that there is some really in-depth look we have to do in terms of the spending of that we're doing in all of our, our schools and looking at other ways that we may be able to make some reductions, or if there are things that we have been doing that, that don't support the goals of the district. And I'm not, I don't want to give people the impression that we're, that that may be happening, but I do think that there are probably things that we have to look at and other ways that we could make some better choices or reallocate our funds in a, in a different way for our students.
I mean, I know, just in the conversation with you, there's been small incremental sets, nothing beneath you, but small incremental process improvement sets that you've been making with your team along the way. So it sounds like you'll continue to watch for those, like just normal course of business.
And giving us the time, I think that, you know, giving us the time to really make sure that we are purchasing the right curriculum for all of our schools. You know, that we're looking at course selection for our students, that we are you know, where, where, we've been very fortunate this year to partner with the town for facilities and making sure that, you know, maybe there are some options for a bulk spending that we weren't doing before. And and those things do all add up.
Yeah, one more question.
Well, purchasing, no, not bulk spending.
One more question, so on the purple budget. So it's the four point three million over guidance.
Correct.
So from what I, my understanding, I'm just kind of thinking through like mechanics of how this would work and further implications. That takes us close to, in my understanding, to the amount that's avail, avail, available straight for us to raise taxes in terms of kind of taxing up the levy or consuming the entire available levy. This is close to the whole amount, I believe. What are, with us doing that, what are the implications to the school components of the facilities master plan initiatives going forward? And I know we've, we've got, if you go through the list, there's, you know, right now, it's Kit, Kit, the rebuild of Kittredge or the new build of Kittredge. And we've got Franklin and the different schools having, there's that plan. Or in some of it was using that levy, levy capacity, right? What, 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 if we do the, we make these choices now?
Master's facility plan two, and they may make changes and some of the items that are on the plan. And I think that's the conversation. So I just want to preface that I did this because at the last meeting that we had, there was conversation and we have all agreed to have a tri-board meeting with the understanding of we, I think there was conversation of, of not going to, if, if we were not going for an override. If potentially looking at other funding sources, I know Mr. Moskovich had made a statement about that. So the purpose of moving forward, my reason for moving forward with the sixty nine million is that, that this does meet the needs and and listens just to what we heard from, from families. But there are always gives and takes, right? There are always consequences for what might happen. But I think we all agree that the guidance budget isn't good for our school system. And I, I know there's no one here that wouldn't want seventy one million, almost seventy two million dollars for our school system or more. And the sixty seven, the alternative budget does still have some, some significant consequences for our school district. But that's why the, the, and and I know that there are people who are, are not thrilled with this, with the sixty nine million dollar budget or the purple budget. Because it, it, the only one that doesn't close Kittredge School is the level service budget. But I believe that the sixty nine billion, and I believe this is a conversation, this budget gives us an opportunity to have a conversation with the boards. And to be able to, to hear that, does it mean that, that it's going to change facilities master plan two? Does it mean that we are going to tax to the levy? And, you know, are those the things that we're willing to, to let go of in order to maintain these services?
I think that's one of the things as we move forward is knowing, being in, being able, us being informed and obviously all the, the voters as well, that if we do any, anything other than guidance, that there are implications. It's not just raises in all of our, you know, the raises of all of our tax, our property tax, but also what else aren't we going to be able to do that we had planned? Not saying that those are the wrong choices, but just saying we need to be really crisp on what, that we're making those trade offs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kona, can I ask my, make my one little comment before you go, or, or would you like me to wait?
Could you hold on for just one moment?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to, going off Ms. Cormier's comment about looking, looking forward is if we were, and this may be a question for the tri-board meeting, if we were to say max tax to the levy, would, would that impact any of the money we were planning to use for Kittredge?
Hey, can I chime in here? I, I might have an insight on that.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think, and I'm, I can't say I'm a hundred percent sure of this, but I think that the my understanding anyway is if we tax to the levy, right? What we're really doing is shifting what would have been collected from Amazon to the taxpayers, right? So the citizens pay that money. It should leave the rest of the, of the planning in place. I think what happens is if we don't do that, right, then those future, you know, i- if we don't do that, well, if we don't do that, we won't have the money to operate, right, at, at the purple level or the, or the level services level. I, I, I think it, I think they're separate buckets is what I'm trying to say.
I, and I'm, I'm not so sure that's correct. That Amazon money was, was to be allocated to certain things, and I, I believe Kittredge was going to be one of them.
Madam Chair, I, I, I had a conversation with the manager today and I can answer this question explicitly.
Oh, good.
The current plan was that, that we need about three million dollars a year of debt service to build the Kittredge, to re, to rebuild the Kittredge. And the current plan had been to ask for one million of that in a debt exclusion and two million of that within the levy with the funds that we within the levy with the funds that we would be using now to go from the guidance budget to a higher budget. So at sixty-nine million, we would leave, that would leave only about eight hundred thousand in the of available levy for next year above and beyond normal. So it would mean that the amount we would have to ask for in in an override, in the, in the debt exclusion would be roughly twice as much. And then sort of connected to that is if, if we have to have a higher, if we're going to have a higher than normal sort of level service increase next year because of, among other things, what's in the teacher contract. Again, if the less money that's, i- if we use all of the five million now, then we would have to have another override next year just to keep level services. Whereas if we don't use it all now, we with a little bit of judicial adjustment, as, as the superintendent was just saying, we might be able to get by without asking for no, I, I think to try to get just a vote in town meeting, let alone an override this year. And then next year to go for both a debt exclusion and an operating override, it's probably not, just not possible. This isn't really a question, but a statement. The people who say that we, we ought to ask for a level funding budget. It's not up to us to decide. We have to, in order to do this, these things, we're going to have to persuade voters either at town meeting or in their, in the voting booth to, to make a conscious decision to raise their taxes and that. I'm, I think all of us are happy to help make that case, but it's not an easy case to make.
It's just, I think we need, all we need to be aware, it's, it's almost like a balancing act and making sure that we're getting the money we need now, the money we need next year. The money we need for Kittredge, for a school that desperately needs to be rebuilt. Making sure we're able to cover all of these things in, in a responsible way that's still beneficial to all our students.
So Madam Chair, just for clarity, so if I could ask Mr. Moskovich, so you, I think what you said is that if we use levy capacity now, it does, it does indeed impact our ability to use it later for for the Kittredge School. Okay, so that's an important concept to understand, right? Because
So they, they, the, the way that it works is the increase in the levy limit is based on the prior year levy, not prior year expenditure. So if we ask for, say, four point, just to round it out, four million of the five, then next year, the, that, that doesn't, the fact that we increased spending within the budget does not increase the levy limit from what would otherwise be next year. So that would mean there'd be about a million dollars of unused levy limit next year. Not the five million that we have now. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
I think too, that the, the plan for that levy, I mean, we all have our, our school blinders on, right? Cause that's what we're focused on, that we think about the larger town. I believe that was allocated for other things, for facilities master plan two, besides just, you know, the, the things we're caring about. I think that's the other part of it too, is making sure that voters know well, it's not just the items for the school that we would be doing a trade-off on, it's also the other items for the town.
Yeah, I mean, it, the Amazon, the excess levy capacity is in part because of Amazon, but the money that, that gives us and the flexibility gives us was for other projects, including Kittredge Youth Center Fire Station. And if we use that money, asking the debt exclusion number we are asking for is going to be much bigger. Um, because within that capacity, we can afford to pay the loan. Right? That's, that's without ra, them raising taxes even more. Um, and that was the goal, and that's been the plan. And if we have to adjust the plan, we adjust the plan. But we just have to know that we, what, what happens when we do that, the consequences of the choices that we make. And I would argue that, Ed, a little bit that yes, the, the town meeting has to decide to raise taxes, but I would argue that that starts with us. If we don't push for it or we don't try for, then they don't even get to make that choice. So although they get to make the decision, we play a role in getting it there, if that's the thing we feel is really important. I'm sorry, Ms. Cornick, you had, we, we cut you off.
Yeah, is, was there anything else on that topic? Cause I was moving to another topic. Well, not, I mean, within the school budget, but another point. Okay. And I wanted to ask Ms. Ms. Lathrop and Ms. Ando, you know, over time, we've, we've, this district has worked to decrease class size. My question is, historically, has there been a significant change in, in our, our test scores with the students between as, as the class sizes have reduced? Did we lose them? Ms. Lathrop's having trouble with her computer. Oh, we're getting an echo.
Are you both in the same room? One of you will have to mute.
Excellent. Will you repeat the question for us? Yes. So over time, the district has worked on reducing class sizes. As we look at the historical data, has there been a significant change in our test scores academically between as our class sizes have reduced?
There has not. Over time, there has not, with our reduction in class sizes, mostly since after COVID, we have not seen an increase in student achievement based on those numbers.
All right, Mr. Hicks, did you want to jump in with your question?
Yeah, um, sorry, that was really inappropriate. Yes. Superintendent Lathrop or Ms. Ando, just one quick question about the grants. You talked about the, the Title I grants. Are the federal ID, idea, special ed grants also not included in the current budget? Are they, in addition? Tracy had shared with me the amount of money that we currently get from the federal government for the, for special ed and early child special ed.
I'm going to ask Gail Dowd to, on that, and I apologize, my computer went crazy.
So Mr. Hicks, to answer your question, when we're building the budget, we do make an assumption that we will be receiving the IDEA grant as well as circuit breaker. So we do assume a portion of the tuition and transportation will be put on those funding sources.
Okay. Thank you. So, and this is, this is like a little bit of our budget, but turmoil in Washington around federal grants and if Department of Education does make me a little nervous when we have that particular grant as part of our, as part of the thing too. And this isn't about us, this is just about, it makes me nervous. And then I, one of the comments, Mr. Brown, that you made earlier, on one of the questions you asked, actually really frustrated me. And I don't think that was your intent, but it left me feeling very uneasy. If we have to make, make some tough choices to have kids go to different schools, we cannot allow our schools to be pitted against each other in terms of one being better than the other. All of our schools are absolutely wonderful. All of our schools have amazing staff and kind, caring teachers. And all of our schools at the elementary level provide wonderful educational opportunities for our kids. And I know people are beholden and biased about the school that their kid goes to. I probably have that too. My own children went to Atkinson and did absolutely amazing, and I love the staff there at Atkinson. But I'm sure Ms. Koenig would say the same about Thompson. All the schools are absolutely fantastic. And, and this is for others to hear too. It bothers me when people describe one as being the best. They all have their wonderful qualities. Are there's, are achievement scores higher in some places? Sure. But that doesn't make it the best place. All of our schools are doing the very best that they can for for our students and everyone, our students would be lucky to go to any of them. And I'm sure that Superintendent Lathrop and Assistant Superintendent Ando are going to ensure that educational opportunities exist across the board for all of our kids, because that's what the job is. And we have to think about all forty-five hundred kids and educating them. Thank you, Ms. Cornick.
Can I ask, I'm not sure what comment I made, Mr. Hicks.
When you're asking about if parents would be able to advocate to have their kids sent to another school. There was a little tinge there that made me a little uncomfortable. And you might have much just about a geographic location and that's, I understand that. But the idea that I'm going to be assigned to one school and I don't like that school, so I'm going to then advocate to go to another one. That makes me uncomfortable. Cause all our schools are wonderful.
Okay, yeah, I was, I, I had no intent and along those lines. I was just curious what the, I, I was just curious what options would be available, just so folks would be informed.
Yep. And I know that wasn't your intent, but I just wanted, like, that was the impact of, of the words. I just wanted to name that.
Okay, I see. Yep.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I make a comment about your, 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 the line of thought that you developed about the relationship between class size and, and performance?
Yes.
So I I went online and looked at the literature about class size, the inner relationship between class size and student performance. The picture is something like this, all else equal, smaller classes are better than larger classes. However, it's nonlinear, meaning in the range that we're talking about, what Ms. Ando said is kind of consistent with the literature, that if class sizes go below fifteen, then you begin to see a really strong, stronger impact on performance. And there, we're obviously not going to afford the whatever ten or fifteen or twenty million dollars that that would take. And if class sizes go much over twenty-five, you begin to see a deterioration, which is exactly why Ms. Lathrop made the purple budget, because we wanted to be responsive to that. Also, class size is really not an end in itself. It's a means to an end. They, and what, what, what the studies show is that it also depends on, on the quality of teaching. And that if you have teachers better prepared, you might, with slightly larger classes, you might actually have a better result than the other way around. And that the kind of teacher training that, which, which is why I asked Ms. Lathrop about the teacher leaders, the kind of things that we're beginning to do can make a huge difference in, in student outcome at far lower cost, right? It's not like, you know, cutting, cutting class size costs money. And you want to ask, if you spent that money in a different way, uh, what would the result be? And the answer is there are, there are options for improving student outcomes, particularly within, you know, if you stay within, if you don't get much up above twenty-five or twenty-six, there are options that will give you a better, better bang for your buck, for better, for, for want of a better word, that you can make a bigger impact, that, that helping teachers learn different techniques about how you manage classes, how you get students involved, how you get students challenging each other. I, as I think most of you know, I spent twenty years before I retired, working with schools that were working on improving instruction. And I routinely saw classes with twenty-four children in them or twenty-five children in schools with poverty rates three times ours with stunningly impressive performance. So and, and that what's really, what's really exciting about what, what we're beginning to do is this isn't just, th- this is actually us helping the teachers help each other, that involving lots of teachers in this, helping each other. It's, it's a really positive experience. It's, it's not that teachers don't want to teach well, or that they don't do well, what they, what they've been, what they know. But when you get a whole bunch of teachers helping each other to learn things that they hadn't been aware of, you get some really dynamic results.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moskovich. And I, and I think what I was, what I was really looking at is, you know, we, we've almost done our own kind of study, right, with smaller class sizes in North Andover. And, and what I was really looking for was did smaller class sizes significantly impact or raise our test scores? Or had they, they stayed pretty streamlined? And I, and I think the answer was they've, they've stayed pretty streamlined. There hasn't been a, a significant increase, if I was understanding that correctly. Correct. Okay. All right. So we do need to take some action. We were scheduled to do a budget vote. As I look at these budgets and we talk about the implications of each and what, what funds we think we can get from the town, what things we might be able to vote on. Um, I know there's been comment about the guidance budget. Are we able to raise that floor? What overall impacts does that have? And I think as we look at it, we, we also have this tri-board coming up, and I think we all have a lot of questions as we've dug deeper into this than we were aware of at our last tri-board meeting. Given that, it's, it's my, my feeling and that I don't think we're ready to make a complete budget vote without knowing all of the implications, not only for this year, but for next year and over the, the overall town, town implications, the, the domino effects that may occur with budgeting. We do have to transmit a budget or budgets for discussion. Not necessarily that we need to recommend one at this time, or that we need to vote on one at this time. So with that, yeah, Mr. Hicks, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I think what's important for myself and maybe others to consider is that if we were to, if we want to go above the guidance, the only way we can do that, practically speaking, is to have the support of the select board and the thincom. We don't want to, I'm happy to argue and advocate and do all that, but we don't want to create an adversarial relationship where, because if we're going to ask the town meeting to do something for us, we need their support and we need them to, practically speaking, have a favorable recommendation as well. So like, I think it's important that we, we keep that in mind going forward, that we, we have to advocate and we don't succumb to what others want, but we also don't become adversaries in the process. And there's a, there's a lot, there's someplace in between that we, I think we need to make. And I think the other boards, we worked together to develop the plan and we all signed off and approved of facilities master plan two. And if we are going to make a change, I think it's only right that the other boards and town meeting play a role in, in doing that, because it's a, it's a deviation from what we have been saying was going to happen. And if that's going to be the case, then they deserve that opportunity to and be presented with the facts and what reality is in terms of what we can do with the money. And then and, and as a town decide what are, what's our vision for schools and what do we want to have our students be able to experience?
And I don't think it changes that, you know, we all want to see a level services budget. I think that is across the board, very, very clear. We want to make sure that we are making a fully conscious and aware decision and working with our other boards on this, on, on a problem, on this issue. And it's, I think it really does take a group effort to make sure we, I mean, it's our job as a school committee to advocate for our students and we will fully do that to make sure that our school services get what they need. Sometimes it doesn't always look like we pictured, but I know we have incredible leadership that, you know, no matter what happens, we, we can make it, make sure we, we get a valued, valuable experience for our, our students. I know none of us are happy with the guidance budget and we absolutely don't want to see that. And I think Mr. Moskovich has, has touched on this at the, at the last meeting, when he said, you know, if, if for some reason we can't pass the budget, what is going to be the fallback? And I don't think any of us want to see this guidance budget as the fallback. And to be able to not make that, that full but fallback, we, we need to be able to work with the other boards on finding a solution. Did any of the other committee members have any comments that they want to add in?
So, um, showing critics, so is the, if we're not going to vote on a budget, are we working to reduce the number that we transmit? Cause it feels like if we were to transmit four, we're kind of just pushing the problem down the road and not making a decision. Do we, are we considering, being that we're considering, let's narrow, you know, which ones are we narrowing down to as contenders? So then we have kind of a more focused. So then we have kind of a more focused discussion with the tri-board versus the things, I mean, the, I think, I don't know. Forget who said it, how many of her months ago, a year ago, right? There's no good choices here, forget who, I don't know whose words they were, it was someone, we know we were gonna have to make hard choices. And we knew we were gonna have a lot of not fun ones in front of us. It seems like this is our time, or we're gonna have to make, even if we don't get a final vote, to your point, on a, on one of these budgets to recommend, we need to at least narrow down. I would think, uh, is that?
Um, I mean, that could be the, the decision of the committee, um, in my perspective, as we go into this tri-board meeting, which. You know, may not be the only one, and we may have to have more than one, and we may have to have additional school committee meetings on it, but I think it's important for everybody to have the discussion of. This is what we get at each step for our money, if we're able to get here, this is what we can accomplish, if we're able to get here, this is what we're able to have. And to be able to have that laid out step by step, to be able to have a really good discussion on where we're going, um, and what's available. To us and what cuts we'd have to make if certain monies were not available to us, I think, you know, those are discussions that we need to have with the. Uh, finance committee and the select board. Um, I don't, I don't, I would not be opposed to saying, let's talk about, let's push, you know, transmit all these over so that we can have an open. Discussion of what it looks like at each level and where cuts would have to be ma- made. Um. To show that, you know, as, as we get more money, we're able to do things significantly better for our students.
Can I make a comment, Madam Chair?
Oh, uh, kid, okay.
Yes.
Well, I, I, I certainly, I agree strongly with Mr. Hicks, I, I'm glad he said what he said, that. Long experience with town meetings. Um, suggests that for any agency of town to go to town meeting. And ask for a significant amount more than the finance committee and have them strongly against it is a. Is a fool's errand. And I, I, Mr. Hicks is just dead right, we, we need, we need to ha- to have a conversation in which they come out comfortable. Feeling comfortable about what, what we're asking for, I think it's. It's pretty clear from this that all of us would really hope that we can get support either for the purple budget or something very close to it. And, and just what you said, Ms. Kinnick, that because it's laid out in this way. The totally understandable desire of our colleagues to sort of understand what they're getting at each step is really important. And I think the main things here, which is getting the class size down to twenty-five and not, not having such big layoffs in the. Counselors and so on, pretty self-evidently a good idea. So I, I think that coming in, as, as you said, Madam Chairman, I think implicitly, we're all really saying. Can you, can you live with this? Have we persuaded you that, that what the superintendent has put in the purple budget or, or most of it? Is really a good idea and is worth doing, and then we just have to see, are they willing to work with us on this?
And Mr. Moskovich, and I'm just gonna uh, disagree with you a little bit on that, in the point that I, I respect our other boards, I think we, we need to work together as a team. However, we, this has been, I, I'm not worried about comfort level, we've been uncomfortable, we've been uncomfortable with the guidance budget that we have been given. We've been uncomfortable with looking at cuts that we have to make, and I think it's time we all get a little uncomfortable together to do what's best for our schools. Because that, that's, that's our job, and, and making sure that, you know, our boards are on, on, in line. To make, to see what the repercussions are across town, and it's, it's all gonna be an uncomfortable decision, I don't think anybody's gonna be comfortable.
Madam Chair, I have a few thoughts I'd like to share.
Sure.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I believe I was the one who, who said that, uh, uh, I wanted, I really wanted to see a menu, right, of what we get for our money. And I'm really delighted and appreciative of, of superintendent and her team putting this together tonight. Because that's exactly what I wanted us to see and to be able to discuss, so thank you for that. Um, I think too, we all need to keep in mind something, which is if. We look at what we actually are going to spend this fiscal year, if I, my math is correct, it ends up at sixty-five point eight. And I think that's a baseline everybody should have in their head when they look at these different alternatives, right? Because that's the reality, right? That's where we are today, that's the real, real number where, I mean, assuming that the projections to the end of the year are true. Um, that's where we're gonna end up, so the guidance budget is actually less than that, right, which would be, you know, be terrible. Um, so I, I think we need, all just need to keep that in mind when we look at the different alternatives here. Um, I, I would personally not be opposed to us coming into the tri-board meeting and saying, guys, we really want. Whatever it is we want, I know personally, I want a level services budget to be what we would recommend. Um, at least if we had to take a vote right now, that's where I would be. However, um, you know, it's clear that I, I could, I could definitely use a thorough, more thorough understanding of the implications. Of that on, uh, the, the broader picture for the town, and that's where I think it's great that we're having the tri-board meeting, and I, I'm gonna come in there with a lot of questions and I want to understand, you know. Maybe I could get comfortable with the purple budget if, if, if it's, if it's the practical reality, right? If it's gonna get the support like we were just talking about from the other boards, and I really want to understand that better, so, um. I don't think, I guess I disagree a little bit with, with, uh, Ms. Cormier, that. I think it is good for the other boards to see these four alternatives, right, to know where we're at. Again, I would not, I would be perfectly comfortable with recommending one of them, in my case, it would be the, the tan or orange, I'm not sure what color that is. The level services budget, but, um, short of that, I do think they need to see all of this. Thank you.
Could I make a comment about Mr. Brown's comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um. To get to the level service budget would require an override vote. Um, nobody in town that I've talked to imagines that this is possible in less than a year or two of preparation. I actually took great pride in the fact that when I was a town committee chairman, you know, back when Teddy Roosevelt was president. Um, that I got the first override and it took a year and a half to get it. So, but let's suppose that by some miracle, we got it, then you have the problem. That next year, um, we have the problem that. You know, that the projections of next year's budget are that we're gonna need a bigger increase. Than the roughly three and a half, four percent we've been getting from the town, and we might need another override vote. The offer, the, the, the possibility of getting two override votes in a year. You know, it's, it's, it's just. It's not conceivable that that could happen, and so I think there's a powerful case for not trying to do it this year. Because you've got an option, which I think, if not perfect, allows us to have class sizes that are reasonable and funds our drive to improve instruction. Uh, and leaves us in a much better position to deal with. You know, an outlook next year of, of our expenses going up by more than the normal rate. Um, that, that is consistent with the levy limit increase.
Mr. Hicks?
Um, I'm torn. Um. In my head, I always get stuck between what is the best path forward, practically speaking, and where I really want. Um, and I want all the money, um, I've always wanted all the money for schools and, um, personally, if it meant we had to delay. A use center, I would be, like, I would vote for that, I'm not so sure the other four thousand people at town meeting would agree with me, um, that's where I get, where. The two sides of my brain get in trouble. I said this a couple of weeks ago, I think I said it last week, my first goal has to be. Preventing that guidance budget from being a reality, that cannot happen. Um, and I know that many people watching and, and are, are advocating for level services and. I agree that that is the thing we should, we should go for in many ways. But the consequence of losing that fight is steep and catastrophic, and. I don't want our kids to have to experience that, at the community chat the other day, um, a couple of them, uh, people there reminded us of what it was like in two thousand seven. Um, when the other cu- when cuts were made, and it was, they weren't talking about twenty-five kids in a classroom, they were talking about what does fire code allow in the classroom? Which is a much, much higher number, they were talking, they told us about how seniors were done at eleven o'clock, because there was no thing for them to do. And how study halls just happened for younger kids, um, because there was no place for them to go, and that is. Not a place or not an experience I think any of us want for our kids, um. So I, I struggle, um, in terms of like, how do I make sure that that doesn't happen? Um, and I was reminded by one of our speakers about some of the things that we have said in the past, I think she quoted me extensively, um, thank you for. Looking back at those things and reminding me of my words, and I do take them seriously in terms of like, what is best for our kids, um. And I'm trying very hard right now to think about what is the best thing for our system and all forty-five hundred students and all five hundred plus staff. Make sure that we can sustain ourselves, um. Because if we do have success next year, it's not guaranteed that that continues, um, the amount of money we then have to go up the following year is a lot. Um, just based on our obligations for our, for our teacher contract, which is the thing we need to do for our teachers, it was a well-deserved and hard-far contract, I'm happy we have. Because they need to be paid more, and I would not, um, I don't want to, this is not, that was not a statement to blame them for anything, very much like, we came to that because. Um, it was hard to get there and is what we needed, um, because it's what they, they need to be paid well to do the amazing job that they do. Um. But I'm just fearful if we go up to seventy-one, we can't sustain that, and we just see even more people lay off, get laid off, and even more reductions, um. And then it, it just, it means Kittredge and that new building and our ability to have quality built, safe buildings that meet, um, current code just disappears. Um, and that matter, that is really important for our system too, so I. I understand why everyone wants the seventy-one million, I truly do, and I really want to, but I also think about. What are the limits that others are gonna place on us that there we can't avoid? Um, and if we go for, and what are the consequences, um, for flying too close to the sun, um, and I. Don't want to end up in a really, really, really bad place, um, so those are some of the struggles I'm having. Um. I wouldn't mind forwarding all four onto tri-board, but I would only ever say yes to that in terms of the red budget there, the sixty-five, sixty-four, eight one. Um, that the only reason we're doing this is that you need to see what. Our system would look like, um, if they don't help us, um, figure this out, um, if we are left alone. Um, if the town doesn't come together to, to make that, to make this, one of these other ones work, um. That'd be the only reason why we, we should transmit it, um, because then in my mind, it is absolutely not a, not acceptable, um, so.
Ms. Cormier.
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify my comment when I was talking about narrowing down the budgets that we put forward, by no means am I saying that we should not share the pros and cons of these. And all of the work that the superintendent and her team did on these budgets, but I believe we can share this information, but still make a hard decision and narrow it down. So we can start to move the process forward, so I, I think, it doesn't. Yeah, but one doesn't, voting down and narrowing them to some point, doesn't preclude sharing them and, and showing this information. So, just want to clarify that, I wasn't saying kind of hide and only show one or two, I'm saying let's narrow down, even if we only knock one out. Start, start the work, and then we can still share it, you know, at least show them, like, hey, we did these other things, when they start to have questions, everybody's gonna want to pick and choose. We've got that backup.
I, I guess the issue I would, I have with, with narrowing it down is, oh, if I'm gonna throw out one of these, it's gonna be the guidance budget, right? But I, I want the discussion to be, this is how catastrophic it is going to be. Um, and any three of these is better than that guidance budget.
I didn't think we could throw out the guidance, but I thought we had to put that in there to make sure we at least ended up with that, I thought that, just mechanics of it.
I mean, we can, we. I, 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 we do have to transmit a guidance budget, I'm not ready to throw one out, because, like I said. Blue is red, better than red, purple's rather better than red and blue, orange is optimal. And I think being able to see those steps and what those cuts entail. Um, and like, like Mr. Brown had said, being able to see what you get for your money at each step, what has to be cut at each step. I think those are discussions we, we need to have at tri-board. I don't know if anybody else agrees in that, and, and if others feel like we need to, to cut one out, you know?
I. And I, I. I would be in favor of cutting out the guidance budget, um, I, I know that everyone said that we have to send that, but, um, I'm. I'm still not convinced that we do, and I could be wrong, and I'm willing, if I'm wrong, then I will happily admit publicly that I'm wrong, um.
And from what I understand, if we don't have, if we don't, if we don't have this guidance budget, and for some reason, one, all these other three budgets fail and we don't have a budget at all. We don't have a budget at all, and that's not good either. And, and then we're, we're, we're going on a month-to-month and reconvening a whole nother town meeting, which is money we could have put towards a budget.
That's a consequence of town meeting doesn't adopt a budget.
And if we've got to transmit the guidance to have that as our fallback, right?
Right.
Or do we?
Fall back, we don't, we have no budget. Well, should the other three, for whatever reason, fail.
Well, we have to submit the guidance budget because we were asked to and we're required to, and I'm not sure if the superintendent has included class sizes there. But I strongly agree with the chair, we need to have that budget to make clear exactly how much we don't want to have it. It needs to be there to make the point, I, I'm sure that the class sizes would be, the maximum class size would be thirty, and, and I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that was it, I mean, my, my hope would be when we get to tri-board and they see, you know, we work together, see, you know, this is, this is horrible, I can't imagine anybody would want it, that we. At that point, can get it thrown out, you know, I, I don't know, that, that could be a, a goal that we have. Or something that we can work with them to say, like, this, this is absolutely not good enough, and this cannot be our fallback.
By any. Madam Chair, I have a suggestion, maybe we could pass a resolution that says that, at least says that none of us. That we, we, we don't want a guidance budget, it could, we could at least declare that.
We could transmit all of them and say, and then officially say as a group that we are vehemently opposed to it, is that what you mean, Doctor, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, that's my, that, that's my idea anyway.
I mean, we can.
Because I feel like informally through this conversation, it's clear that none of us want it, so we can go public with that, I mean, we could pass, I.
So we, so I get what you're saying, you say, let's transmit them all with the statement that we are all against the guidance budget.
That would be.
We also try to say which one we're for, right, like, hey, we gotta start, like, we've got a. I feel like we've got it, if we're gonna say which, we've got to just start picking one.
So, so Kelly, can I, is it, Madam Chair, is it okay if we engage in this kind of discussion, like?
Thanks, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean. Um, um, my issue is that I feel like I have something to learn at the tri-board meeting that will help me. Figure out where I really want to pu- put my bet, for lack of a better word, um, you know what I'm saying? It, it would help me to understand their perspectives and what they think they can support. That will help me decide which of the other three I would put my emphasis behind, I know that in my heart, I want the seventy-one point seven eight four. If, if I can be convinced that that's just impossible and impractical, and, and perhaps it is, then, you know, then I'd be inclined to vote for the sixty-nine, you know, for the purple one, you see what I mean? I, I feel like we have to learn some things next week that will help us narrow it further, but for sure, none of us want to recommend the red, so we might as well say that. That, that's where I'm at, anyway.
So I, I agree with the way Mr. Mr. Brown put that, that it's. My final decision will depend on where we have support. I, I think we need to submit not only the guidance, present, not endorse. The guidance budget and the level service budget, because that helps people understand what's happening. I personally would submit the level service budget, but say that. I am totally not comfortable voting for something that requires an override, and I think, um, Ms. Kinnick, you, you mentioned this, but. What you said actually happened in Andover last year. They went for an override and either it was lost or the vote was never held and they had to have another town meeting. And if, if the option, we, we get to present one budget eventually, whatever one we decide we're gonna eventually present. And the FinCom can present another one. And if, you know, if the other one they present, if, if we were to present the level service budget and basically ask town meeting to ask for an override vote. And the FinCom, who knows what they would present, but that would be the alternative. Wouldn't be in our control to say, well, yeah, we want the vote and we want the backup to be this other. So personally, I would I would be comfortable just saying now that, no, we're not gonna ask for an override this year.
I think the way that would be structured at town meeting is I think we are allowed to have an, you have to have an omnibus, omnibus budget article that includes everything. And then you can have a separate warrant article for additional funding on top of that. That's the way you protect yourselves against not having a budget at all. We have to work to make sure that sixty four eight is not the number that's included in the omnibus, I can't even say that word, article. With the very, that's why I feel like what we have to figure out how to do is that we, I don't want that to even be the floor, as someone else said, of what we go to. So like, if we had sixty seven as, uh, is what's included in the, um, in that one article, and then we asked for on top of that, an additional two million to get to the sixty nine, that would, for me, would be a better, I don't even know if that's possible. But that's a better structure than starting with our sixty four eight in there, um. Because I don't want that number. It's so bad, like that, it, it's so horrible, so, so, so horrible, um.
I think you're right, Mr. Hicks. I agree with you and that, that's, I think what Mr. Brown is getting at. That's why we're having this discuss, discussion with the tri board to see if, if we can bring up about
Exactly.
that situation.
Right. And I think that, you know, when I look at the level services, yes, I want level services, but at what cost does that come? Does that come at a cost of Kittredge? Does that come at a cost of we're in the same position next year, having to make additional, you know, horrific cuts? What is the full cost of a seventy one million dollar budget? And that, I think we need to have that discussion at tri board.
And they have, they'll be, we should in advance, make sure that the town manager is able to share with us the, the figures and facts about the debt exclusion and the monies from Amazon and what the, and remind us all what, um, facilities master plan two was aiming to do. Just so we are, we have our eyes wide open about with the choices that we make, what the impacts are, just like we know what the impacts are of having more or less money for our schools. We need to know the town needs to know what the impacts are of, of, uh, um, on those things too. That's only fair because we're asking them to make the decision.
Right, right. And I, and I would, and going off Ms. Cormier's point, I think she made earlier. Um, if we can, I know this is very difficult to do, but if we can have Gail and Ms. Lathrop and look at what would a FY twenty seven budget look like with inflation, with lane changes, with, with cola changes? So that we can have some type of general idea if we're, we're gonna be prepared going into that as well.
Yeah, can I amplify, uh, Mr. Hicks's point? I think if the impact is what I wanna understand, right? Would help me, it would help me tremendously to know what, what of those three columns on the right uh, support if I know, understood the impact on facilities master plan two and the building Kittredge and everything else. That's really important. So, uh, I mean, are people, uh,
So I, I
I, I, I was gonna make a proposal that I, I'll, I'll
Well, hold on, before you do that, I, I, Ms. Cormier raised her hand.
Oh, sure. Sorry.
I, I think I'm the one pushing, trying to narrow down the budgets that we push, so that, that's not the, the, the larger sentiment. What about? I like, I like the idea and I think we would all, I think, agree that the guidance budget, if we gave that, we, we have a negative, I think, to quote the superintendent, would be devastating for our, our learners. So that would be one that we would not endorse. So if we wanted to transmit them and say that, I would say if we're going to say which one we don't endorse, maybe endorse isn't the right word, and have a preference, can we say which one we have a preference for? If we transmit all four, let's at least give the other boards a signal of, we don't like this one, but of what we've seen, this is the one we think we're leaning towards, but we need this rest of the information from you. So at least we can signal to them what we're thinking and allow them a little bit more focus.
I, I mean, I'm with Mr. Brown on that one, though. I think we, we need, we need to know the impact before, for me, especially, I think, to know for me to say, I'm endorsing this one or I'm recommending this one, or I think this is my favorite, I wanna know the full impact.
Me too.
Are we ready for a vote on what?
Sure, to make a motion. I was gonna make a motion that we put, uh, we, uh, transmit all four, but that we strongly, uh, recommend against the guidance budget.
Um, is everybody good with that wording of the motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Say no. And I
I think it's, yeah, go ahead.
I would say, I, I think it's important that we signal, even though if it's not, we're not, but I don't think we should vote. I don't think we should endorse was the wrong word, but I think we should be signaling our preference based on what we know so far, gaps included, but which one we were going for. So based on not doing that, I'm gonna say no.
Um, and I'm going to vote yes to transmit them to have a discussion with the tri board, um, with a strong I, I hate to, like you said, use recommended with, with advising against a guidance budget. All right.
Um, Ms. Ms. Kenny, I could just observe something. I have received a very large number, as you have, emails now telling me that I, we have announced our intention to cut. So I just wanna underscore the wording of Mr. Brown's motion. We haven't indicated our intention to do that. We've just transmitted these for discussion. We have not yet voted on what we actually recommend.
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our next item of business is the school building committee letter. Um, if we, can we get that letter pulled up? Okay, so we had been asked by the Kittredge School Building Committee, um, on, we are to provide feedback regarding whether to proceed with a newly designed building on a clean site or to use one of our formerly designed versions of the project was keeps the current building in place during construction. And they need a final decision from us by February seventh to be able to make progress. So the decision we have to make is, are we wanting to proceed with the, a newly designed building on a clean site for Kittredge? Um, I think the, well, the implications of that would be, we would be, um, taking Kittredge offline while the new building is built and then reopening it. Mr. Hicks?
That might seem confusing to people with the vote we just made. Cause if we get level services, people would ask, well, then why would that still be a thing? Um. But that also, the, the way we word it could then just mean that, um, it could be, because construction won't start until a year and a half from now. So that it would close, it would just close in advance of construction is what we're saying. And that whether that's for the September or the following September, when Kittredge is being rebuilt, those students will be someplace else. That's what we're deciding.
Yes.
Right. I think, I, Madam Chair, um, if, if, uh, my belief is that, that if we pass, or well, essentially, right, this ultimately, at some point, I, I would guess this a year from now would mean we would take Kittredge offline, but we don't necessarily have to take it offline for next year, for this coming school year. Or if in the event, we manage to get a level services budget, we wouldn't have to do that. But it would commit us to doing it two years from now, assuming that all the other things happen, right? That, that the, the, you know, the MSBC approves it and that we at town meeting also pass it. So there's a lot of other things that have to happen for that to ultimately be the case, right? So all this would be, well, what this really is, is telling the architects and the project managers proceed with, uh, with a plan that would take it offline at some point in the future. It's not necessarily immediately, right? And it is kinda tied into the budget discussion. So just clarity, it does not necessarily mean it closes or it goes offline this coming year. It may, but it may not. It just means ultimately it would, again, assuming everything else happens, right?
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hidden in the calculations behind all these budgets is the fact that because class sizes are so very small at the Kittredge, um, we are able to, to get to the twenty five, the goal of, of having all the classes twenty five or less at that cost only if we take it offline right away. I believe the superintendent pointed out at our last meeting that because there were so very, very small classes there, she was able to move the twelve classes into other schools and add only seven teachers. So that if we did not take it offline right away, then the cost of each of these alternatives would rise. And then we would have to go to the town and to the other, to the other committees and say, actually, we're gonna make it more expensive to get these results. I'm not quite sure that's a very good idea. In fact, it's, it's not a very good idea.
For, for clarity, what I was trying to say is that in the event we get a seven, if we were to get the level services budget, then I think what you just said would not be true.
Yes, if, we are as likely to get the level service budget as, well, as, as the president is to follow the law. I mean, it requires an override vote. It's never happened that we, that somebody got an override vote with a, a three month start. It just hasn't happened. And I think it's really unwise even to pretend that it's possible. I think that probably in order to do what we would like, at some point, we're gonna need to carry, follow up on the, the, the facts that a lot of the people pointed out to us, that we really do spend less um, than other towns like us. I did a calculation, which I think I shared with all of you, that maybe we should make public that if we, if we were spending in relation to foundation budget, what those other comparison communities were, we'd be spending four, five, six million dollars uh, more than we have been spending. But in order to do that, you have to, we'd have to have a very carefully thought out plan. We'd have to work closely with the other committees in town. We'd have to be building support to go to an override vote now with almost no um, with, with not enough time is a really irresponsible thing to do. It's not that it's a bad idea. I think we probably should do it. But we should do it well prepared and that means starting at least a year in advance.
I I'm not so sure. I mean, I, I think what we've all agreed, we'd, we'd love to see a level services budget, um. Is it a good possibility? No, but I don't think it's a zero percent probability. There may, I think there's some there. Um, I think we, we do have some, some very passionate people who may be able to head up a campaign to get an override. Um, I don't think it's, it's a completely out of a hundred percent or out of the realm of possibility, um, just not a high percentage.
It also depends on what the fallback would be. It's, I think you pointed
Right, um. But given that, even if we were to get a level service budget, um, you know, we were able, there's enough people went out in town, realized all the repercussions and that's what came through. Well, I think what we're saying is we'd be able to keep Kittredge online another year and be able to think about then what that following year is gonna look like when we take it offline to build on a clean site.
This vote right now, yes, it's intertwined with budget, but this vote right now is whether or not we want to have the school building open during construction or not. And I think like, and I, from my mind, and this is me rationalizing my head, I have to, I know it's intertwined. But I also feel, believe that we get a better building if the Kittredge building is taken down and we get, um, and students go elsewhere for that time. We get, we end up with a better product for everybody, um. Whether that happens this year or next year, I don't know. That depends on money for other things, um, and the goodwill of our townspeople. But in terms of getting, if we're gonna invest millions upon millions of dollars into a new building, I wanna make it the very best building we can have. Um, and I think having the building be closed and having students elsewhere for a few years, it's hard. I've actually done it as a teacher twice. Um, I moved, um, it's not fun, um, but we ended up with a much better space than we could ever have dreamed of, um, because we did that. Um, it's, in some ways, it can be worth it.
And to add on to that, I, I, I have a real concern about our students and, and faculty and staff being in a construction site. The safety of it makes me really scared. Um, from what I understand, I mean, the construction site is gonna be ten to fifteen feet away from the current building. Uh, and I just don't see it as being safe. And if it's, if I'm looking at our students, I don't want our students learning in a construction site. It's noisy, it's messy. It's, it's just, I don't see it as being a safe environment. Mr. Brown?
Well, we, we, we kinda learned about that, didn't we? And, and NAMAs was not a full construction site. It was an addition. And we had an incident, right? That was scary. Right? With the, um, the, the, the old, um, stuff in the basement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that heaven forbid if something were to happen, if we were to leave those students and faculty and staff there and something were to happen, that's on us. And I, I, I can't, I can't do that.
Can I, um, ask a superintendent, Lathrop, a question actually? Um, so as, as I was preparing my, my notes for tonight, you know, about the, the Kittredge School Building Committee, I seem to recall that we had, there was, there was something about the, the, putting the design in the middle of the property that was educationally a benefit, but I can't remember what it was. Am I, am I making that up or is that something that you pointed out? I just couldn't remember it.
I think we talked about by putting it in the middle of the property, we were able to reconfigure the classroom so that the flow was better for the students. Um, and I think the sort of the I remember the architect talking a little bit about that, about being able to tweak some of the, the wants that the teachers wanted, um, for our kids.
So it gave them a little bit more architectural freedom to implement some of what, like they, the feedback they got from the staff. Is that, is that, I think that's what it was.
Right.
Yeah. So it's maybe hard to measure it, but there's, that's in addition to all the things I stated before about whites.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I, you know, I just wanna reiterate what you said when you, when you were speaking before, the traffic pattern will be much better, um, with, with a clean site, being able to build on a clean site. with a clean site, being able to build on a clean site as opposed to what we're, you know, having to do now. And a more appropriate play area for the students. But for me, it was really looking and seeing that ability and just what Ms. Conag was talking about too, in terms of, it is going to be very close to the school. And, you know, I've worked in a building where we just built a playground in the school. And it's challenging. There are times that you're not being able to go outside. There's lots of, you know, the construction trucks in and out. But I think being able to change the flow of the traffic will be a real benefit to the Kittredge School.
To state the obvious, it's like 70 years of benefit against three years of inconvenience. It's not really a close call.
Well, actually, once construction began, there'd be no outdoor recess, right, probably at all.
Probably not.
Yeah, it would be almost impossible. I can't even imagine how you could do it. Because the site is small as it is, and now if you're going to have one building on it and a new building coming up at the same time, there's no place else to go, right? Yeah.
And knowing we have a building where, if it's warm, you have to open those windows. And I have concerns about the air quality of our students and our staff and our faculty during that process. So if there's, and no other comments, I would need a motion to to commit to taking Kittredge offline to proceed with a newly designed building on a clean site.
Mr. Brown, you should make it.
Yeah, I'm struggling because of my obvious connection to the school, right? My kids all went there, et cetera, and, you know, I live in the neighborhood that goes there.
Is there any feedback, Mr. Brown, from the School Building Committee?
About, oh, about whether, whether they prefer this or not, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think everybody agreed, this is just intuition. There was no formal vote, but the, I mean, I think most people feel there's plenty of benefit from, you know, from a construction safety point of, the things I mentioned earlier, the construction safety, the layout, the freedom, the, I mean, there's no, no one gave us a number, but you do have to believe it would be more efficient and therefore there'd be some cost savings to it, you know, by not, not having to be delicate in the way you handle trucks and things like that. So, I don't know, Ms. Lathrop, do you have any other thoughts on what the KSBC had to say about it?
No, I think you.
Captured it? All right, well, then let me think about how to make a motion. I guess I will move somewhat reluctantly, but thinking practically that, that we instruct the KSBC, the Kittredge School Building Committee, that they should move forward with architecture planning on a free site.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we will transmit that to the Building Committee to forward on to MSBA. All right. We are about over an hour behind schedule. We do have our second public comment that I promised that we would take some more. So I will, Mr. Hicks, if you want to take that over again, and we can, we can open that up.
Right now, we only have one, oh, two people, three. We have three people. We'll have Amy Birmingham, Andrea Leokos, Sean. I don't have a last name on Sean, Dan Tyber, and then Sean Dunn. So we have those five right now.
I, and I understand there's, I want to have a cutoff period because it is, it is late. So if we can cut it off after Mr. Dunn, so that we can
Sure.
close our meeting.
Ms. Birmingham, I think I gave you permission. Can you do us, give us a mic check, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Amy Birmingham, 776 Dale Street. My son is a second grader at Kittredge, and I have a daughter at NAMs in sixth grade. I've been taking down copious notes during this call and during the discussion, and I, I've began and started in many different ways, and I honestly don't know where to begin. I guess initially, with the introduction of the Purple Budget, I was quite shocked by it. Superintendent Lathrop, you may recall, we hosted and welcomed you to a Kittredge Community Call and fielded several questions from the Kittredge Community, which you were gracious in answering. But the whole time, it seemed very clear that Kittredge would go to Sargent as a community if Kittredge was to close. And I think, you know, if worse came to worse, we were all comforted by that in some way, shape, or form, that at least they would be with their friends and their classmates. These are kids who went through COVID. These are kids who have also had a lot of different experiences and untraditional experience in elementary school. So having that level of comfort that they would go as at school kind of made us feel a little bit more at ease, even if Kittredge were to, were to close. And at that time, you assured us that there was space, it was not an issue. There was space available, that it was all going to work out. I don't know where that changed. Obviously, you had some discussions with the Sargent Community as well. But I, I have to say, I'm heartsick. I'm heartsick that the burden of this issue seems to fall on Kittredge, on the Kittredge Community only, it feels. And I have to just say that I find it really insensitive and misleading that we keep talking about this temporary closure of Kittredge. My son is in second grade. He will never see the inside of the new Kittredge School. And that was fine, when I thought he would at least be able to finish his, his time at Kittredge. But it's not a three-year inconvenience. It is an inconvenience to our kids' elementary education. It's devastating in so many ways, and I'm heartsick. And I've also heard, and I don't know if there's any truth to this, that the Community Programs Office would be going to the Kittredge site. So now that we've also discussed and I guess voted that even if Kittredge doesn't close next year, it will close the following year, will the Community Programs be going to that site? And how does that, I guess, factor into the plans for the new school building? You know, I'm just, I'm really disheartened. I waited a long time to speak. I listened to many points of view, and I know that everybody is trying to do their best. But I'm heartsick over this Purple Budget that just came out of nowhere, it feels. And it feels it is solely impacting the Kittredge Community. And I don't even know what else to say. I'm just hoping that as a community, we can rally together and fight this however we can, because our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Leokos, can you give us a mic check?
Mic check, 1212.
We can hear you. Name and address, and you may begin.
Sure. My name is Andrea Leokos. I am not a North Hanover resident. I live in Gloucester, and I teach at the middle school. Please stay the course and push for the budget that keeps the systems and structures we currently have in place. When we talk about class sizes, a lot of times we're assuming that every child learns the same in the classroom of 24 to 26 kids. They don't. Their needs are all unique, and I acknowledge that test scores are important, but based on the district PD I've been sitting in, so are the relationships that are built between teachers and students, which is something that can't be measured and something, sorry, I haven't heard a whole lot of discussion about tonight by this committee. NAMs is a huge building. Next year, there's going to be over 1,000 students in that building, and with the Purple Budget, there will be at least 10 fewer adults. I invite you all to come in during the school day for classes and all three lunches when we don't have enough coverage, because I think your perspective may be different once you've lived our experience. Please advocate for the level services budget. You can persuade people to make a conscious decision. It hasn't happened yet. Growth mindset. We use it at NAMs and all of our schools. You won't have to live the day-to-day of your hard decisions, but our students will, and my incredible colleagues across this district will as well. I'm begging you to push for the level services budget. You can do hard things. Teachers do it every day, and I can promise you this, we will be standing next to you all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Sean. I don't have a last name attached to it. Can you give us a mic check?
Sean Quinn.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Sean Quinn. I am a teacher at NAMs. I was wondering, I know this is for comments only, but I have a question, actually, if maybe you guys can answer it. I didn't see class sizes for the middle school. I wasn't sure if that was left off the screens on purpose, or if it was just the sizing of the presentation. I didn't see class size.
Thank you. Ms. Lathrop, can we get that included in the presentation for next week?
All right, so if that's not going to be answered tonight, I heard that at the middle school, there's a possibility of two teacher teams. And so that would mean, I'm on a five, a five teacher team right now. If I'm down to two, or two, four persons for seventh grade, or I'm sorry, yeah, two-person teams, that would mean my 115 kids would be, I think, 28 per team or in a class?
So the class sizes for the middle school is on the last slide, last slide of the presentation that I made. It is linked, so you'll have, you have a copy of that. But the projection for the middle school is 24 to 26. The teams will be a combination of numbers, so there may be a two-person team, there may be a four-person team.
Okay, so, because I, if I have 115 on my team right now, and there's four teachers, that's 28 kids. So I just, I want to make sure that that's, you know.
That's not our projection. Our projection class size is between 24 and 26.
Okay. So thank you for that information. I guess, I'm concerned tonight, I came to this meeting expecting a vote. I heard a lot of, I want the level budget, I want the level budget. I think I heard that from each one of you tonight. But then I heard more loudly how you want the Purple Budget. And that's concerning, because if you're a school committee who, according to your, your statements when you were running for election, you were here to support the schools. I don't feel that you guys are supporting the schools. That $71 million budget, that level budget, is still putting us at the bottom. All right, that, that's not getting us anywhere. So let's keep that in mind when we're talking about cutting, you know, staff, cutting programs. Just to get to below average, we need a level-funded budget. So I hope you guys take that into consideration when you go into Finance Committee or the Tribe Board Meeting, and you reconsider strongly advocating for the level budget and not, not advocating for the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Dan Tyber. Sir, can you give us a mic check?
Logan, can you hear me?
Hello, I can hear you.
How you doing, Dan Tyber 162 Hay Meadow? Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't sit idly here. I feel it's complicit. You guys claim, you know, that we have to find the uncomfortable and make uncomfortable decisions, but in my opinion, it's flat-out negligence against what we are hearing, what the community is screaming. And as superintendent, as members of the board, you guys have to appreciate the majority of voices throughout the last six weeks include the concern about closing Kittredge. Yet, these voices seem to be falling on deaf ears. Talking about construction in the classroom or the relief of traffic patterns is the least of our concerns. So I appreciate the willingness for creativity and attempt to find a more reasonable budget. However, none of these current proposals adequately address the concerns of the majority of the attendance in here tonight. In my opinion, it's imperative we include an option to, that we include a proposal option that keeps all schools opens. I mean, we heard tons of evidence tonight. The well-being of our children and the stability of our growing community must be a priority, and we cannot continue to ignore the long-term impact of these closures and the impact they'll have on our community. So I have a question for this group, and I'd love a quick yes or no. If you must reduce budget, will you hear our voices and continue to look for an alternative proposal to a level service budget? Will you provide a proposal that keeps Kittredge open?
We've already made our vote tonight, or we don't, we're not making any more comment on that. So this is public comment. We're not obligated to respond.
So are we led to assume that's, that's a no? There will not be a third proposal that includes Kittredge being open?
You've made a comment. We are not required to give any answers. You can assume whatever you want to assume, but just keep in mind that's purely an assumption.
Okay, it was a question, but I, I think we understand where you're at. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sean Dunn. Sean, can you give us a mic check, please?
Check.
Yep. Name and address, and you may begin, sir.
Sean Dunn, 325 Berry Street. With some discussion included, trying to justify larger class sizes due to test scores and some enhanced teaching practices. I think that the quick answer on the test scores, I'd like to know exactly what goes behind that, because the disruption to test scores statewide, nationwide, due to the COVID pandemic, leads me to believe it would be very difficult to give a quick answer on that question. And as far as the enhanced teaching practices, I would believe that enhanced teaching practices are positive. But combining that with smaller class sizes would probably be even more beneficial. So keeping class size small and not justifying larger class sizes would be my. I also heard some admonishment of people writing emails saying that the committee has, is cutting budgets. And that was quickly followed up by multiple claims that a level service budget is impossible. So the messaging that's being received by the community is that this committee is going to cut the budget. And that's the messaging that this committee is sending by saying it is impossible. That's what you're telling the community, and that's why they're saying back to you that this committee is cutting the budget. The last thing I just wanted to say is that everybody on this school committee probably said when they were running for school committee, that they wanted to make schools better, and by closing schools, you're making them worse. I hope you'll think about making schools better going forward. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Conag, there's two more people with their hands raised. Can we give them each a minute and a half?
Yes, please.
Nadia, you may have a minute and a half. Can you give us a mic check?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. You may go.
I believe, I don't think that I gave you my address last time, so I'll do that now. I'm at 64 White Birch Lane. I feel compelled to really address the class size and per people spending again. And I know that people really don't like hearing some of these numbers, and I've heard that some of my data is incorrect. And I don't want my comment to be taken as one school is better than the other, because I fully support school pride. I have yet to meet. fully support school pride. I have yet to meet a teacher from North Andover that's not an excellent teacher from any and all of the schools. And I've met many during this process. So this is not at all intended to mean that any of the other schools are not good schools and neither are the teachers. But I think that's saying that class size does not have an impact on performance and that per pupil spending doesn't also impact performance does three things. It ignores well-known research. It ignores what the teachers have been telling you for the last month and it ignores the data. I dug into the M-CAS scores because I was told that the school, US News rankings were not an appropriate measure. And it turns out that per pupil spending between the, among the schools is also not proportionate. So based on what I know, and this is in the North Andover, um, website, so anybody can look at this. Sargent is the school that spends less per pupil. They spend fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two. The school that spends the most? Kittredge at eighteen thousand, two hundred and some. When you look at the M-CAS scores, uh, seven percent of students in Sargent perform above average. Do you want to know how many percent of students in Kittredge perform above average? Fourteen percent. So if those numbers are not correct, if that data is not correct, I beg you, send it to me, but this is on our own website. So I ask you to really consider the fact that class sizes and per pupil spending is directly correlated to academic success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, uh, David Evangelista, um, can you give us a mic check, please? David? Mr. Evangelista, we can hear you. Oh, there you are.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, name and address and then you may begin.
Uh, David Evangelista, twenty-eight Morningside Lane. I, I just want to say I do not need to repeat what others have said. I think, uh, we all know that the vast majority of us, uh, and how we all feel, I think we, we are all on the same page. Um, the contradictory messaging is very concerning, very concerning to all of us. Um, because we have to recall, we have voted you into this position because we wanted you to be our voice. Our unified voice. And when all of us are, are making these comments to you or invoicing our concerns to you, we would hope that you would take that to heart and be our voice. But it has become increasingly clear that you're making the decision against what parents want, or at least it's leading in that direction. Uh, and this is to me an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment to our community, to our kids. You've all made statements that a level service budget is best for our kids. Then do what is best for our kids. Be leaders. Stand up. Be examples for our kids. Because if you don't, you're no longer, you, you, you're really no longer fit to sit on this committee. If you're not going to listen to the parents and be our, our unified voice, that, that's what you're there to do. Our children deserve leaders. And as far as I can see, all of us who have made public comments in the last several weeks and all these meetings, who have done the research, who've gathered the community, those are the true leaders and we hope that you will side with us. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody, Ms. Konek.
All right. Thank you. Um, our next meeting, we have the tri-board meeting on Thursday, February thirteenth at six PM that will take place at the North Andover High School Auditorium. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
She's nodding.
Okay. And I vote yes. We are adjourned.